Meeting by 20 percent, and so we should be able to catch up on the time. Will you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Spanish translation?
We have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight. Vivian?
Sí, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que habla español y necesita un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, recognitions?
Well, we do have a presentation tonight, and this is from our Wellness Council. We're proud of our Wellness Council efforts, and with us tonight we have Debbie Badger. Debbie is here to share information on the efforts particularly of four schools that have made in complying with the district's wellness policy.
Thank you very much, President Heron, school board members, Dr. Sarvis and staff. It's an honor to have served this past year as the Wellness Council Chair. What I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce our steering committee, if they would please stand. We have here Susan Horn from Santa Barbara County Public Health, Jerry Waite from Santa Barbara County Public Health, and Nancy Wise Nutrition Services Director for the Santa Barbara School District. Verity Allen, who is a teacher at Harding, was unable to make it this evening, and without them, I certainly wouldn't be standing here. So, tonight I'm going to share with you the reasons why we're here, the accomplishments that we've made, share some of the stories of what's been happening on the school campuses, and then talk about the goals for the upcoming school year. Why is the District Wellness Council important? It's to support staff, volunteers, in preparing students for long health. I think that that's one of the goals that we certainly have met this past year on our Wellness Council. Those that attended, we had between 18 and 30 attend our meetings. We had representation from seven schools. I'm a little ahead of myself, excuse me. To set, monitor benchmarks to change student health, implement and monitor the board policy, and also to empower students to make healthy choices, and thusly improve academics. This year, the Wellness Council met four times. Our steering committee, though, meets every month that we're not, the Wellness Council does not meet. So, we've held four meetings, and we've had eight meetings with the steering committee. Just to show you a little bit of the diversity of the representatives, we have had school board support, which has been definitely an asset this year, nutrition services staff, we've had teachers at all levels, we've had students, parents, a school nurse was at every single meeting, Santa Barbara County Health staff, Sansom Diabetes Research Institute staff, and many others. And so we had an extremely diverse group this past year helping us to implement the assess and implement the wellness policy. Out of our 18 to 30 members that attended, seven elementary schools were represented regularly, seven secondary schools, child development, and a school nurse were in attendance at our meetings. It's interesting, this past week at our steering committee, I was sharing with the steering committee that it takes a long time to change culture on our campuses, and I feel like we have birthed, finally birthed, the wellness policy. A lot of education has occurred, both at the staff level as well as at the administrative level. We started out the year with a letter from, we started out the year with a letter from Dr. Sarvis that was orchestrated by the Wellness Council that went to parents at all levels. We had board support, which we thought, which we feel was extremely instrumental in the success of the Wellness Council this year. We developed a school wellness assessment tool, and we took a look at it, and we had all the schools go back and assess where they felt they were at in conjunction with their school principal. We did six e-news articles this year. We had, thanks to Susan Deacon, we did presentations at the elementary and secondary's principal council, and also to at the parent advisory committee for elementary and secondary schools. We also did a rethink your drink presentation at our March Wellness Council meeting, and I don't know if you're aware, but the rethink your drink is a statewide effort that was kicked off in Santa Barbara, I believe, was this past Saturday or this coming Saturday? This past Saturday. Okay. And then also too, Dr. Sarvis did the op-ed article in the Santa Barbara News Press, and we appreciate your support. Many, many, many things happened on campus, and you'll hear a lot more extensively when we go to do the presentations, but just to share a few. Adams had a junior chef day that was orchestrated by the Orfola School Food Initiative. Franklin, as you know, if you read the e-news today, they actually, through Diabetes Research Center, they had a staff person onboard, and they actually are a finalist in the Governor's Challenge Competition. We just received word about that yesterday. Harding had the Nutrition Decathlon. Monroe implemented a garden. They also too, developed an obstacle course. Child Development, they implemented nutrition education in their weekly lesson plans. We had some schools, the secondary schools are more of a challenge than the elementary schools, and the secondary school here at Dos Pueblos, they had, what they did is instead of from the top down, they were working from the bottom up, and they implemented a Health Now Club with the students, and they were finding that that was better for them in terms of implementation. La Cuesta, with the assistance of Nutrition Services, they actually started breakfast service. And then Santa Barbara High took on the biggest challenge. They distributed information on campus to the coaches, to the clubs, in terms of healthy alternatives for food and for sales. Challenges, the challenges that we foresee. In the coming year, we really want to work on having every school represented. We had probably about 65 percent of the schools represented, and we want to go to 100 percent next year. In terms of accountability, this continues to be an issue, but I think it's becoming less and less of an issue from last year to this year in terms of compliance with the policy. I think a lot of it's just educating our staff. All elementary campuses having recess prior to lunch. We have, we have some, probably what, about 60 percent, Nancy, would you say, are having recess prior to lunch. Off-campus, closed-campus lunches on our secondary, on our high schools. And then we have concerns about the health education and how it'll fall under PE in 2010, Our goals for 2010, 2011, again, I said I wanted to increase representation on the Wellness Council. We're going to research caffeinated beverages brought onto school campuses and make a recommendation to Dr. Sarvis. At our last meeting, at our last meeting in May, we talked about expanding the assessment tool in a lot more specifics, and then next year they will perform two assessments. They will come in October with their first completed assessment, and then in May they'll come with their last completed assessment so that we have set benchmarks and we can actually track progress. And then we, and then it, because of the fact that we educated the two new board, the two newest board members, we think that we should take that to new principles. So we plan to educate the principal over at DP High School on the wellness, on the wellness policy, and then also we've been requested by the representative at Santa Barbara High to come and speak at a teacher meeting. So we'll see how that goes. And now I would like to, I would like to recognize four schools that, I don't know if you know, but a mini grant was written to Partners for Fit Youth, and we received $500. And $250 isn't a lot of money, but I was amazed at how that was a motivating factor for a lot of people and a lot of schools. But unfortunately, we only received four applicants, and so we're going to recognize all four of them and talk a little bit about the accomplishments that they had on their campus. Nancy. Paul and Kathy, would you mind coming forward? And Teri, would you mind coming forward?
No, you don't have to. Just stand there and hand it out. Oops, Adams.
We do have plaques for the four schools, and I see we'll need to take some of them to the schools.
It's for the school. We did plaques for the schools, even though we recognize that the staff were instrumental in bringing forth the wellness policy. And it's interesting, out of the four applications that came forth, the two schools that really radiated the greatest amount of change was where we had principal support. So thank you, Kathy. All right, we'd like to present to La Cuesta. You want me to read it then? Yeah. Says here, "La Cuesta High School with appreciation for La Cuesta High School's exemplary commitment to the health and well-being of its students. La Cuesta High School has been a leader in changing the culture of student and staff wellness." Just so that you know, La Cuesta, with the assistance of Nutrition Services, implemented a more diverse lunch program. They got rid of the packaged foods and had choices for their students. With the forging ahead of Kathy Abney, they began serving breakfast in the morning to their students, and they had about 15 or 16 students arrive early for school for breakfast. They began a school garden and worm bins that were built by the students, and they also had a cultural food class on Fridays that exposed students to unfamiliar foods. So thank you so much, La Cuesta. Okay, Santa Barbara High. Teri Palmer is here, and she's going to be receiving the award for Santa Barbara High. Santa Barbara High says the same thing, "With appreciation for Santa Barbara High's exemplary commitment to health and well-being of its students. Santa Barbara High School has been a leader in changing the culture of student and staff wellness." Thank you so much, Teri. Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara High School, their main focus was on educating staff on the wellness policy. Also, Santa Barbara High School was the only school that had students attend our Wellness Council meetings. Their focus was having continuous access for drinking water for their students. They also, they also installed hand sanitizer for the sanitizer stations for the students, and also the students and faculty also partnered to offer a free yoga class for students and staff. So, thank you, Santa Barbara High. I knew that Dos Pueblos wasn't going to be able to make it, and I don't know what happened to Adams, but to give you a little bit of an idea of Adams, they hired two PE teachers to meet the PE requirement. They ceased food as fundraisers. They also no longer serve food as rewards. They created an edible campus garden. They painted the walls in the cafeteria and the eating area to make it a little, to make it a little more friendly. And they also started before-school fitness class for students. I could go on and on about the changes at Adams', but those are just to name a few. Dos Pueblos, they sold veggies and hummus at back-to-school night. They began a Health Club Now, which was a club that the students began, and they were trying out new fruits and vegetables in conjunction with Nancy. Nancy was able to provide some unique and some different fruits and vegetables, and so they were actually trying it out at lunchtime. And I got an email from Monica Scafidi, a teacher, and she told me that she was just really pleased that the hottest, the hottest athlete came up and came back for another taste of a...
Kiwi.
Was it kiwi?
A nibble of kiwi.
So, they also distributed to the staff healthy alternatives for the classroom around the holidays. So, little changes are happening. As I said, I feel like we've given birth, we're in the infancy stage with most schools, but with some schools, we are toddlers and we're beginning to walk. I thank you again for your continued support, and I anticipate that we're going to continue to grow forward. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Parker?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Badger, and thank you to all members of the wellness team, because the policy has been put in place for a number of years. But again, the board can give direction all we want, but if we don't have implementation, it's not happening, and people really have very strong feelings around food, as you know. And it's been interesting to see over the years how much of a political process it is in a very odd way. So thank you for all the progress that you've made. I do want to clarify one thing, health education going into PE classes, that's only in the junior high schools, correct?
That was my understanding. We'll need to check if that's different.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Deacon?
As someone who attended those Wellness Council meetings, I just have to compliment the staff on how productive those meetings were. Everyone who came to those meetings was energized, involved, participated. We learned through the use of the assessment tool that not all schools were communicating as well as they could, and so I see that as a real avenue to bring the principals in, which we know is a big part of this. The Orfola Foundation, I think, has been a big player with us in this, and that's really worthwhile, and I especially like the fact that Santa Barbara High had some students attending, and maybe we can get some more students to attend. The recess prior to lunch has been, become a bit of a mission for me, and I think the board probably has heard about the benefits to this, but one of the things that I think we overlook is that we're really recapturing instructional minutes, because when the students return to the classroom, if they've just eaten as opposed to coming straight from recess, they're much more ready to sit down and learn. So there's multiple, multiple benefits from doing that, and so I would really like to see all of our elementary schools participate in that. And I really appreciate all the healthy initiatives in our food services and how we're working together, because it's a real partnership. And if anybody has not seen that rethink your drink presentation, you'll probably never drink anything but water again after that, but I would love to have our elementary and secondary parent advisory council be, have a chance to have that presentation.
That's good.
Because I think we realize that, you know, the fundraisers that parents do, if they had sat in on that, I think we'd suddenly see a lot of those drinks go away that are being sold at fundraisers. So, at any rate, congratulations, it's been a great year, and I'm really looking forward to next year.
Paul, if anybody gives a report that they've seen me in liquor stores and grocery stores looking for huge cans of soda pop and beer, it's because of you showing me at one of those meetings, the size of a Coke that, and the size of a beer that looks like a Coke, or a soft drink, or whatever, with 14 percent alcohol, that's equivalent to four normal beers, and parents buying it for their kids thinking it's soft drinks or power drinks when it's really beer. That was an eye-opener to me, and so I have been looking for it in liquor stores and grocery stores, only for that goal, you know, so just want to make sure you understand.
Okay, okay.
I'm glad you clarified that.
Yes, yes. So, if the school board president is seeing, looking for big cans of beer, that's why.
Okay.
But that's an eye-opener. If you haven't seen that, look for that huge, 14 percent alcohol. It's amazing. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Very much appreciated. Great job.
Well, I do have other items to report on. We're well into summer school at this point, particularly for our extended-year special education students, which is currently underway beginning June 14 and carries through July 9. Our traditional high schools are having summer schools for students at risk of not graduating. You know, there's been a change, and it's, the change is because of the lack of state funding. We no longer have the funds to provide the full range of courses that we used to provide in summer school. This is really only course makeup for students who have failed courses. Various elementary and junior high schools are running specialized programs with site categorical or with private funding, however. For further details, please visit the Summer School 2010 page on the district's website, and the district's website is shown, Chris, right there on the screen. And to give an update on our professional development activities, this school year we had 130 teachers, support staff and administrators participate in SB 472 training, as well as REED 180 training to support staff and teachers new to the program. There were 35 sessions during our June 35, our June Professional Development Week. You know, this is growing. There was a time when we did professional development during the school year, during instructional days, and our kids suffered, because having teachers out of the classroom during instructional days was detrimental to instruction. This week was attended by more than 100 teachers and other staff members, and I'd like to commend Dr. Cynthia Waite and a number of others, Elise Simmons, Marina Marquez for their work in putting these trainings together, and Santa Barbara Junior High for hosting Professional Development Week. This is actually along with people like Sandy Robertson and Janet Gordon, who really started planning for these trainings in November, and very soon they'll start planning for trainings for next summer. In addition, Robyn Swawsky and I spent two days last week meeting with site administrators in our Standards-Aligned Instructional Leadership Program, and we will continue that, albeit in a different form, to support the board focus goals with our site administrators this next year. We'll be telling you more about that. School recognitions. Each year, Newsweek Magazine picks the best high schools in the country based on how hard school staffs work to challenge students based on advanced placement, college-level courses, and tests. Just over 1,600 schools, only 6 percent of all the public high schools in the U.S. make the list. The good news is that three of our high schools made the list, and I am pleased to report that Dos Pueblos High School ranked 614, Santa Barbara High School ranked 1390, and San Marcos High School ranked 1617 on Newsweek's list for 2010. So they all made that list in the top 6 percent of public schools. Dos Pueblos High School students Jake Mogtader and Nikhil Sindey, along with Kevin Noronha, won the Dash Plus Competition, a national high school student contest that challenged students to design a dashboard of the future. Hundreds of students from across the country created dashboards to provide eco-feedback to the driver and promote more fuel-efficient behavior. The submissions were judged and scored by an independent expert panel of judges representing the fields of the automotive design industry, engineering, education, and energy, combined with the votes from online public voting, viewing, excuse me. Wouldn't you imagine that you would have some online voting there as well? As the Dash Plus grand prize winners, the team will travel to Detroit for a VIP experience where they will pitch their concepts to representatives from the automotive industry and receive feedback. That'll be quite a deal. We'll have to get a report from them. I reported at our last meeting on what colleges our seniors are off to. This year, the top five colleges, four-year institutions and universities most often attended by our graduates are UC Berkeley, UC Santa Barbara, UC Los Angeles, Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, and UC Santa Cruz. And the top two-year college most often attended by our graduates, in fact, with over 700 of our students attending, Santa Barbara City College, our own hometown school, along with UCSB. We also have an elementary school recognition, and it ties right into the fitness and wellness policies. It's a recognition for Franklin Elementary School. Today, the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness and Sports announced that Franklin Elementary School is one of the five finalist schools in the Gold Coast region, and 127 schools statewide that have been named finalists in the council's 2010 Governor's Challenge Competition, a contest that promotes increased physical activity and better nutrition among California's youth. Each of the school finalists is now under consideration for prizes, including 11 brand-new fitness centers valued at $100,000 each. Dave Hat Yonk, you'll need to look for space for that. And 11 regional awards of $5,000 each, which will be used to buy new physical activity equipment. Now, they're just up for the competition. They haven't won that yet. If I know Casey Gilgore, they have a good shot at it, though. Award-winning schools will be announced at a special ceremony at the Capitol in September, and this is the one that Jake Steinfeld, Body by Jake, is a big representative of as well. I would also like to update the board on the relocation of the seven portables at Washington Elementary School. I know you all drive by there and crane your neck to look and see how the progress is going. On June 11, the portables were moved from the blacktop play area, one week ahead of schedule. The classroom portables, along with a new restroom portable, were relocated next to the school library. Relocation-related work is currently underway, and the portables will be ready for occupancy at the start of the new school year. And the Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and news information items on school and district matters. A copy of the June 11 Board Brief is available in the reception area. In our last Board Brief, we issued a legal opinion regarding permissible activities of district board members and other officers in supporting upcoming district bond measures, should the board choose to put a bond levy on the ballot, and we'll have further discussion of that. We've had discussion at two previous meetings. We'll have discussion tonight, and we'll probably have discussion at our next meeting of that issue. Thank you. That's the superintendent's report.
Any questions? Okay. C2, Board Comments and Correspondence. Mrs. Parker?
Just real briefly, back on Professional Development Week, I had so many teachers, because I totally took advantage, and I went every day, so many teachers complimenting the district and Dr. Waite on the program and how much they were getting out of it, and also just a heads up that there's apparently a terrific rhetoric training that's going to be happening in August that you should keep your eye out for in the e-news, because the presenter's supposed to be marvelous. I want to give a shout-out, especially since we have Nancy Wise here, to the summer food program that is going on, that we've heard about in the superintendent's report in the past. We have that going on, free lunches for any child, doesn't need to be in our district, doesn't need to live in our city, they are even passing through. There's now a website at the state level that shows where you can go for your free lunches for children that are under the age of 18 at four of our schools. But I did go to check that out at Lacumbra. I was so impressed, and the kids loved it. Parents can pay $3 and eat. Parents loved it, and the staff that were there were out there asking the kids how they felt about the food, and we're getting lots of great feedback, so I'm so pleased that that is available for our students and for children that aren't our students.
Mrs. Deacon?
Because I wasn't able to attend the tour, there was a special meeting of some of the facilities, I just wanted to mention that Dave Hat Yonk kindly took me on tours of Galita Valley Junior High, San Marcos High School in Washington, where I in fact saw the relocated portables. But if, in fact, we do go for a bond, I have lots of ideas about ways that we could put some of that money to use, because our schools in many ways really, really need those upgrades. So it was, it was very helpful for me to see those things firsthand.
I'd like to thank Mr. Hat Yonk and Mr. Smith for the creative ways you solved that Washington school problem. You know, that wasn't easy to do, but you put your heads together and made it happen, and I know that they're very gracious, gratitude, they have gratitude for having it done, so we appreciate it very much. Okay. Announcement of closed session action. B1 is on the agenda for later. B2 will be on the agenda for next week. B3, the inter-district transfers for the Santa Barbara Elementary School, there was one request, a motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, to deny the appeal, passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. On B4, we had 11 appeals. Motion number one in case number 2010/11-10, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, to deny the appeal with Dr., it was 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. On 2010/11-13, on a motion of, by Parker, seconded by Deacon, a vote of 3-1 with Heron dissenting, Dr. Noel absent. On the following, the motion was made by Parker, seconded by Deacon, and to deny, and they have passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. 2010-11-14, 2010/11-15, 2010-11-16, 2010-11-17, they were all denied, as I said, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, with Dr. Noel absent, 4-0. On 2010... On 2010/11-18, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, to approve the appeal, passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-19 and 20-10-11-20, both were denied by motions by Parker, seconded by Deacon, passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-21, motion was approved, to approve the appeal, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. And 20-10/11-22, motion to deny by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent.
You got them all.
On B5, there was no report, a public employee discipline dismissal release. On B6, a conference with our labor negotiator, there was no report. And on B7, public employee appointment, Director of Special Education. With the support of Dr. Sarvas, our Associate Superintendent, and at the recommendation of our Superintendent, Associate Superintendent, and Executive Director, a motion was made by Susan Deacon, seconded by Annette Cordero, to approval, the appointment of Kirsten Escobedo to be the Director of Special Education for the Santa Barbara Elementary School District. And the motion passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. Do you have any comment on that, Mrs. Swawski, since it was your recommendation?
Sure.
Yes, I certainly have a comment. Kirsten has been working as our program specialist this year for the elementary district, and she has gained a lot of experience in this last year, and we're very pleased with the support of Dr. Carrie Mills to have her as our Director of Elementary for Special Education.
Thank you. C4, Public Comments.
We have two, I think, two speakers who have submitted slips thus far for public comments. I think we may have more coming in. Okay, well, we'll start with what we have here. Deborah Pentland, followed by Kathy Abarka.
I come to you tonight again in hoping that we can rectify students' rights in our district. And it is an ongoing problem, and I'm hoping that each example I give you, that is not the only case, there are multiples. So tonight, I'm going to tell you a story about students with diabetes in the Santa Barbara School District. Our students, we have between 40 and 45 students throughout, all over the city of Santa Barbara with diabetes, type 1, more with type 2. I have a mom, for three years, who's written how many carbohydrates are in her son's lunch. And why she writes this down every day is because he needs insulin injected in his body to maintain an adequate blood sugar. Now, if he has too much insulin, he will go low and can have a seizure and can go in a coma and can die. If he goes too high, it can hurt his heart and his lungs and his blood vessels. He can also get ketoacidosis. So every day, she writes it down, and then I calculate his insulin. I do this for three other students who have diabetes, okay? And they call me, and I calculate their insulin. But the three other students go to, don't have moms who write down every carbohydrate, they eat lunch at our lunch area. And our menus do not have carbohydrate counts on them. I've been asking for carbohydrate counts for seven years. This went all the way up to the Coordinator of Compliance twice before. Now, there's some reason this is their rights under ADA. They should be able to come to school, have lunch, have their insulin calculated properly. So it creates two risks. The students at risk, I, as a Santa Barbara School District employee, am at risk, because for those kids eating off the lunch menu, we're guestimating their carbohydrates. And this doesn't have anything to do with people in the position now. This has been a seven-year issue. Again, we, as a district, do not have the proper things in place, that when we violate somebody's rights, it's not looked at, dealt with, it's dismissed. And so, we're very lucky that nobody's been harmed over these seven years. And many administrators, I've got all kinds of memos and lists and memos, but it's lost. And even when it gets up to the Coordinator of Compliance. So we get upset when somebody goes to get a lawyer or goes, writes a report to the state, but we're not being heard. We want to do good. We love all the good things you're doing. And when something's got to be fixed, I'm hoping that we get a real system that people understand the rights of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pentland. Kathy Abarka, followed by Leslie Sanderson.
Good evening, board. I'm here to talk about our fundraiser that's happening on Thursday night. It's called Laughing for Autism. It's going to be at the new 428 Club, which used to be Sevilla Restaurant. And all the proceeds go to the Autism Society of Santa Barbara. And we would love to have any and all of you there to have some laughs with us. We're going to have some belly dancing first, and then do some laughing. And there'll be drinks and really, really nutritious food. So we invite all of you to come. The doors open at 7 o'clock, and I hope I'll see some of you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Leslie Sanderson, followed by Tom Bream.
Actually, I'm assuming this item is on the consent agenda. Is this the time to speak on that?
Yes, I'm sorry, this is the time to speak to items that are on the consent agenda.
All right. I'm actually just going to read these comments from Sandy, who couldn't make it here tonight because she has a function at her school tonight at 7:00. So this is specifically about item D13 on the consent agenda. The district proposes to pay in excess of $80 an hour, about $653 a day, for an interim HR director. Is that even market rate for this type of position? Once again, the district proposes to hire a retired public school administrator from a neighboring community, as they did with Alan Hilton, Rick Nargi. Have we learned nothing from those experiences? Jerry Fawcett's sole experience in this capacity was during her five years as Superintendent of Hope School District, which was too small to warrant hiring a designated HR director. Isn't this the same rationale that was given when the district proposed hiring our previous Executive Director of Special Ed? About $98,000 for a part-time temporary work for an individual who's already pulling down a public school pension and lifelong public-funded health benefits. And the memo for this position states that Ms. Fawcett will be responsible for recruitment, selection, and the overall management of the district's Human Resources Department, including payroll. Given that the district is not only hiring, but rather is laying off its professional workforce by the dozens, exactly what recruitment and selection will be going on? Also, if little or nothing, then it would seem simple business contract with a payroll service, such as ADP or Paychecks, ought to meet this need at a less than $653 a day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bream, you want to speak to E2, is that correct? Yes, okay, thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. C5, Acceptance of Donations.
Move to approve with gratitude. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0, Dr. Noel not present. D, Consent Agenda. Any pulled items?
I would like to pull one of the sets of minutes from D1. Let's see, the May 25 minute, minutes from D1.
Okay. Is there anything minor, or is it?
Very minor.
Why don't you tell us what it is?
And my suggestion would be on F4, where it's the presentation of the Dos Pueblos Pilot Program for At-West Students. It says that Robin Swawski spoke about the Dos Pueblos High School's Pilot Program for At-West Students. You certainly did make a few comments, but the presentation was by Dos Pueblos staff. So if we could make that minor correction, that it was Dos Pueblos staff that made the presentation about the pilot program for At-West Students.
Okay.
That would be my only correction.
Okay, well, in the motion, we'll encompass that change.
Yes.
Any others to be pulled?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda with the minor revision to the May 25 minutes.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. Action, item E1, 745. Dr. Sarvas, can you help me? This includes a public hearing. Can you help me on the, when the appropriate time for that is?
Certainly, this is a public hearing and presentation, and I believe you probably want the presentation in advance.
Actually, we need the public hearing in advance of the presentation.
You know, we always do that, but it doesn't make good sense to me. But what you need to do is open the public hearing, see if there is any public comment on it, and then go to the presentation.
Okay. Well, we will open the public hearing, take testimony from the public, discuss the proposed use of the funding, approve or disapprove the proposed use of funding as part of the budget adoption.
And maybe I could elucidate that a little bit. What the public hearing has to do with is the use of Tier 3 state categoricals and utilizing the flexibility from those categoricals for unrestricted purposes. And as you can see on Exhibit A in the booklet here, historically, we've used 30% of the state apportionment for those Tier 3 categoricals and have applied them, applied those dollars toward unrestricted expenses. So...
I will open the public hearing, and we'll take testimony from the public. Do we have any? Mr. Wheeler?
I'd just like to call one salient point to the board, and that is, when Tier 3 funding is swept, oftentimes, the district is under the impression that the mandate stays in place, even though there's no funding for it. So I would just make a very short call to your attention on that point, that if you're going to sweep the money, take the program with them. And don't keep those mandates on us to continue to improve or do whatever the mandate is. But it, you know, there was funding there originally. Someone had the brilliant idea of saying, let's attach X dollars to this. And now, we're at a point where we're saying, there's not going to be money, or very little. And we really need to make a very cognizant effort to understand what's involved, what's being asked of teachers, because this oftentimes is that one more thing on their plate in addition to all the others. So I would just ask you to be very judicious with the application of Tier 3 funding and what you're going to ask teachers to do as a result of the mandate without funding. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Discussion of the board? Do you want to make a motion, get it on the floor, so we can discuss it?
Do you want to close the public hearing and then go into...
No, we have to make a motion.
Do we need to make the motion during the public hearing, or after the public hearing?
Yes, it says, "Ask for public comment. The board will approve or disapprove of the proposed use of funding presented by staff in Exhibit A, and then close the public hearing."
I think what you're doing is approving the 30% set aside.
That specifically, or just simply adopting the 10-11 fiscal year budget, given that that's included in it?
Given that that's included, but you probably want to hear the presentation before you do that.
But we can make a motion, because that will frame the discussion and could make things a little bit more expeditious.
This is strictly to approve Exhibit A, as I understand it.
Exhibit A?
Yes.
To approve Exhibit, and that's, it's taking the Tier 3 and moving 30% to the unrestricted.
Yeah, and that is actually where it references ED Code 42605 as the Tier 3 categorical.
Okay, so I'll pull that out separately.
That's what the public hearing is for.
Okay, and I will move that we approve the 2010-11 transfer funds from Tier 3 categorical programs per ED Code Section 42605.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Under discussion? I just have one question. I mean, is there anything in this that we didn't do this past year? I mean, last year, we did this with CalSave, for instance, without knowing that we gutted the program and we were picketed. Is there anything on here we're doing?
It's identical to what you did last year. I mean, there might be some subtle variances of hundreds of dollars, but it's essentially the same. And actually, since, I didn't know I was going to speak about this, but now, since I'm speaking, two things. The program requirements are suspended. However, remember, you're only taking 30%. You're taking about $1.1 million, and still 3.9 remains. So that's one issue. The second issue is, remember that Tier 3 flexibility exists in statute and has a sunset date. I think it will be incumbent on us to basically argue that this flexibility continues in perpetuity. Otherwise, what you're looking at is a $1.1 million de facto cut.
And on the Arts and Music Block Grant, where we're taking $66,000, that's not taking any of, that's not being replaced by HRI money?
Not to my knowledge. And also, remember, when we did the original calculations, the way we arrived at the 30% is when Tier 3 flexibility came into, I was going to say being vogue, but it came into effect. We basically ran an analysis of the amount of funding that was tied to personnel and the amount that was discretionary, and we opted to basically spare personnel and take the discretionary objects, and that's how we arrived at the 30%. Now, obviously, that wasn't a uniform distribution across all Tier 3 categoricals, so we did have some hiccups, like with CalSave, but by and large, that's how we arrived at the 30%.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I will adjourn the public hearing, and we'll go back to the 2010-2011 fiscal year budget presentation.
And this presentation is on for your approval tonight. Eric Smith will continue the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. Staff has prepared the 10-11 fiscal year budget for the board's review and approval in the Saks format. Although the construction of this budget required severe expenditure reductions, it's most likely only a harbinger of things to come. Now that federal stimulus dollars have been exhausted, restricted ending balances have been swept, and state categorical dollars have been flexed, the process of constructing next year's budget will probably become even more daunting. For the last several years, we've been able to do it on skill. I think going into '11, '12, we'll need a little bit of luck. And as I go over the financials, that will probably elucidate what I mean. Having said that, we've used the following assumptions to construct the 10-11 budget. The May revise represents the second milestone in the development of not only the state's budget, but of our budget. And the May revise also lays out the governor's proposals to the legislature, which will ultimately become the state's adopted budget. We've based, this budget, based on the revised, May revise assumptions, as defined in the School Services of California DART Board. The governor's May revise indicates that this California shortfall is roughly $19.1 billion for fiscal year 10-11, slightly smaller than the $19.9 billion shortfall indicated in the January budget. We acknowledge that many changes will take place prior to the adoption of the state's 10-11 budget. However, even though we've been conservative in the construction of this budget, we can't be certain that the expenditure reductions will be enough. So, let's look at it by category. We're in the un- We're in the unique position of having one district in revenue limit status and other district in basic aid. The May revise continues the revenue limit deficit in ten eleven of eighteen point three five five percent. Or looking at it another way, we're getting about eighty-one cents on every dollar. And that's not reflecting COLAs that we've lost. That's just on current year dollars. We're also being hit with a negative COLA, and on top of that, we're being hit with a three point eight five percent reduction on our undeficited revenue limit that in the secondary district translates to about two hundred and eighty-two dollars per ADA, or a staggering two point six million dollars. The elementary district in basic aid status fares a little bit better. Nonetheless, it'll be subject to the state's fair share calculation. As a result, the district will lose six hundred and sixty-nine thousand in funding for the ten eleven fiscal year. It's important to note that the deficits factor is different than the three point eight five percent reduction in revenue limit districts. The reason the deficit was created is always implied that sometime it would be restored. The three point eight five percent has not been added to the deficit. Rather, it's a straight cut to the revenue limit implied there that it's a revanching and that we'll never get that back. Also, with respect to revenue limit, beginning in ten eleven, the revenue limit add-ons for Meals for Needy and beginning teacher salary incentives will be converted to combined per ADA amount using oh seven oh eight as a base year. The adjustment to the Meals for Needy was intended to be revenue neutral, however, based on caseloads. And as we know, once we got into the Great Recession, Meals for Needy caseload counts went up in certain districts, which basically exacerbated what was happening at a funding level because it created a spike. So therefore, the whole idea or notion of creating a revenue limit neutral add-on has kind of went out the window and will have to be reformed legislatively. With respect to special education, it also, it also is inflicted with a negative COLA. Even though growth will be funded, the negative COLA will actually reduce funding. Another issue with respect to special education of importance is the potential suspension of AB three six three two. As you know, that bill required county mental, mental health agencies to provide services to our students. The fear is if this governor does not fund that program, that basically those services or requirements for services will be offloaded to county offices of education and school district with no corresponding funding. That sound familiar? K three class size reduction. The governor does not propose any additional flexibility. The penalties relative to revenue remain intact. As you know, we're at twenty-five to one K three. Instructional materials, the suspension of the instructional materials requirement from nine ten through twelve thirteen is still in effect, which also postpones the State Board of Education's adoption cycle for an equivalent length of time. Lottery funding will be calculated in the same manner as in prior years, with the exception that adult ed and regional occupation programs will be funded based on oh seven oh eight rather than prior year ADA. The base funding or unrestricted funding is a hundred and eleven dollars per ADA, and Proposition twenty or restricted instructional materials funding will be fourteen dollars and fifty cents per ADA. We've used the School Services of California DART Board, which is laid out on page three, to look at both our current year and our multi-year projection assumptions. When we look at what's going on with regard to our own budget, it's clear that we've been trying to fight back a significant structural or operating deficit, but never taking a big enough fight to completely eliminate it, always moving some of it into the next year. Well, that was great when we had eight percent reserves over the last couple of years, but it's a game that will finally catch up to you over time unless you eliminate expenditures or bring expenditure patterns in alignment with revenues, so you have a totally balanced budget. The circumstance we're faced with right now is we have pushed the structural deficit into forward, into front years. Although we've had reserves, we will be able to present a budget here that meets the minimum reserve for economic uncertainties of excess of three percent. However, absent further intervention going into eleven twelve, we'll burn through our reserves quickly and will be negative fund balance. So if you move to page four, you can see in the pie diagram kind of a representation of our unrestricted and restricted revenues. And probably when I should talk about operating deficit, I should probably point out that cash is becoming a real concern for us as well. And the reason cash is becoming a concern for us is when you've taken from all your other funds, you have not what's called, or what's called alternative liquidity. You have no alternative liquidity. That issue reared its head in our most recent trans rating when they started to look at, where's your alternative liquidity? Well, we're looking at fund to fund to fund, and we don't have large building funds like we used to have. So we're able to get through that, get an MG one rating, but it's getting dicey. And what's happening now is, it's not just the general fund. We just basically have no money in other funds. Probably the exception or the bright spot, as I'll walk you through later, is the cafeteria fund who actually has a growing ending balance. We must be in Bizarro World or something, but that's what's actually occurring. So if you go to page eight, as I mentioned before, the elementary district is in basic aid status. The rep, the secondary district is in revenue limit status. And you can see that the elementary has a slight uptick in enrollment projected, exactly the thing you don't want in a basic aid district. This, page five, I'm sorry, top of page five. And then the secondary district, the rate of decline, based on a modified cohort survival method, has diminished, where we were losing two hundred and fifty to three hundred to three hundred and fifty. Now it's starting to flatten out, and when you combine them together, they look pretty flat. So we don't know if last year's spike in the secondary district was an aberration. This November or this September will really be the telltale sign, because then we'll go back and recalibrate our enrollment projections to see if it was just an anomaly. But if it's a not, then what's happening is we're just flattening out. Revenue limit districts are funded on the basis of actual attendance or average daily attendance. You can see for the secondary district with a base revenue deficit and base revenue limit of five thousand nine hundred and forty-three, for any unit of average daily attendance we lose, it's about thirty-three dollars and two cents per day. If you move over to page seven, we always present these pie graphs that show general fund expenditures by category. The first one is restricted and unrestricted. The second one is unrestricted general fund expenditures by category. You'll see subtle differences, mostly in the personnel function, because as you, as you know, that we have personnel that is funded both by restricted and unrestricted funding sources. So the percentages are going to look different from graph to graph, whether you just look at restricted or you look at, or just unrestricted or unrestricted and restricted combined, rather. The next page, on page eight, is general fund expenditures by function. SACS uses function, which describes the activities or services performed to accomplish one or more objectives. That's just a different way of looking at how our expenditures are. On page nine, we have a list of local general fund contributions. A local general fund contribution is required when a restricted program does not have enough restricted dollars to pay for itself. Our largest general fund contribution is to special education. Right now, our special education budget is twenty million one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. It's requiring a local general fund contribution of roughly ten million six hundred and ninety-two thousand, or fifty-three percent. Our local general fund contribution for special education exceeds the amount of state and federal dollars we receive combined to run that program. The next largest local general fund contribution is the routine restricted maintenance account. As you recall, we did contribute three percent of total general fund expenditures for that purpose. However, during the budget cuts of this February, we reduced that to two percent. It's still significant. A pretty good representation of our contributions is in tabular format. On page ten, you can see ninth grade class size reduction, K three class size reduction, federal and state special ed, home to school transportation, special ed transportation, and routine restricted maintenance account. And you'll probably recall that the routine restricted maintenance account used to be three point two or three point four million. Now it's down to two point two million. Another notable item on this is look at the interfund transfers. We're not making any. We have no money to make any. So some of those were conscious, like relative to deferred maintenance where there was a suspension. But some of those, actually, there's some good news associated with that. There's no interfund transfer to the cafeteria fund. We haven't made any contribution, interfund transfer to capital facilities. We've moved away from our quasi-self-funded status in property and liability and went to CIS, which is a joint powers authority. So there's a little bit of good news embedded in there, but it still points to the issue of liquidity and cash. On page twelve, what this shows you is two things. You've often heard me talk about the structural deficit or the operating deficit, the ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures. This particular graph shows you districts' reserves and net ending balance, but it also, it already reflects a four point five million dollar cut going into eleven twelve. So you can see what has happened is that over the last several years, we had significant ending balances, and even with that cut, we remain above three percent, but marginally going into twelve thirteen and thirteen fourteen.
Let's repeat that. I think that does bear repeating what we're anticipating in terms of cuts.
Yeah, I, there's actually two things. I should probably go back to eleven because I missed that page, and then I'll talk about twelve. On page eleven, that's really a good reflection of your net operating surplus or your net operating deficit. And the way you read that bar or that graph is you look at, any bar that's above the center line shows that you had more income than expense on the unrestricted side. And then conversely, when you see the bar that's below the center line, that means you have more expenditures than unrestricted income. What that shows you is that we have an operating deficit in those years, which basically are eight, nine, nine, ten. Is that eight, nine, and nine, ten, or nine, ten, and ten, eleven? And then contemplated in that is that we're making four point five million dollars worth of cuts going into eleven twelve. So you can see, we have a small bar above the center line, which grows to the green in the second subsequent year. So that's the net structural deficit, either operating surplus or operating deficit. And the way it manifests itself in the reserves on the next page is showed in that bar graph. As you can see, the reserves are burned down. It does contemplate the four point five million dollars worth of cuts going into eleven twelve, and our reserve maintains above the minimum, but not significantly on a multi-year basis. Does everybody understand that? I know you don't want to understand it, but.
Just a quick clarification, four point five million across both districts?
Yes.
So.
And you will see that when Meg gets up to talk about the multi-year, that'll be reflected in the multi-year.
So that's the current target in cuts that we would be making this year in anticipation for next year. And this is still all in advance of the state adoption of their budget, which is nowhere close.
Yeah, I mean, if, if things get worse, it could get worse. If we get some luck, it'll get better. The board member, Cordero?
I just want a clarification. You might have explained this before, but in, on page twelve, in oh nine, ten, there's a small parcel tax, I guess, reserve? Is that, was that?
Yeah.
Is that a parcel tax reserve?
Because what happened?
Is that because we, we had accrued it and we hadn't spent it yet?
Absolutely.
So now, for the remainder of the years?
Ingo, outgoing.
Identified as being spent?
Yeah, the assumption is the income will come in and the expenditures will equal going out.
Okay.
But there wasn't accrued, but.
So there won't be any reserve? Okay.
I mean, there'll be a small, we're asking them to carry three percent, but three percent of their total expenditures is not going to show up in that bar graph. So, okay, I'm sorry. It's our question.
Well, I have a comment, but I, when you're finished.
Okay. I think we're going to move to the multi-year projections. Well, actually, before I do that, maybe Meg can come up, and I'm just going to flip to a couple of pages here.
Mr. Smith, when you were finished with the first part, let me ask my question on the first part.
Okay.
You, you skipped over page eight, excuse me, page six, which is the lottery. And I do get questions from people saying, you know, what's happened to the lottery money? So I think it's interesting for the public to notice how, how little money we get from the lottery, how insignificant it is in the total picture. And I think you, you may have commented in a page before, but that one page six really spells out very clearly, the lottery is not bringing in very much money.
Yeah, I, I skipped over it because I felt it was redundant, but since you want me to talk about it, there, there is some things from that perspective that probably should be shared. And I think the, the issues is that lottery is highly volatile. It's been as high as a hundred and seventy-five dollars per ADA, down to about ninety dollars per ADA. Right now, our projections are at about a hundred and eleven on the unrestricted side. I think there's this notion that somehow lottery was going to save the public schools, and in most school districts, lottery constitutes less than two percent of their income. So.
That, that's my important point, is that we do, we do get comments about the lottery and it's, you know, this page six is the explanation of it that everyone should have handy. Okay.
Just, just a couple of things. If you look at page forty-five, which is child development, and I want you to go down to the last line where it says, unappropriated amount, and go over to the eleven, ten eleven budget, you'll see there, there's about eighteen thousand. That's their ending balance, okay? We're going to do the same exercise by looking at page fifty-five, which is the cafeteria. And you'll see in this particular case, we actually have some money. Yeah, six hundred, six hundred, over six hundred thousand. But if you go over to page sixty-five, which is our deferred maintenance fund, it's only about a hundred and eighty-some odd thousand. Once again, if you go over to page seventy-five and look at our special reserve, it's only about thirty-eight thousand. And if you look at our building fund, which is on page eighty-four, there's only about four hundred and sixteen thousand. And part of that is, is you look at the column before where you see the three million, that's the refunding going back. Remember the cash out refunding that was being paid back? So, as I said before, the issue of alternative liquidity is becoming a big one.
Go ahead and explain cash out refunding.
Yeah. There was a cash out refunding done. If you're going to make me explain it, I'm going to preface it by saying, I'm going to qualify by saying, when I wasn't the CFO, and.
And I wasn't a board member.
So in any event, the cash out refunding, in, in a normal refunding, what you do is basically, you refinance your existing indebtedness based on a more favorable interest rate. In a cash out refunding, you do the same thing, but rather than reducing the tax rate, you basically pull some of it out, okay? So basically, you take some of the net equity out, okay? So, when this occurred, there was, camps that were divided on whether it was legal. Basically, there was a school district that asked the Attorney General to render opinion about the legality of cash out refundings. Our board took a very conservative position, waiting for the disposition of that AG opinion. And when it came out, it basically, they said, you know, these are not permissible in the future. And so basically, what we did is we yield restricted the bonds, which is basically going to be applied toward the outstanding indebtedness, and in theory, should reduce overall indebtedness for taxpayers. So, that's how a cash out refunding works.
This is for the benefit of taxpayers in our community.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
And was under legal advice.
Yes.
Right, and.
And other districts, other districts in our area didn't do that.
Not away from the law. And so, in any event, it will be applied toward the outstanding indebtedness, which will go into, you know, if the board decides to pursue another general obligation bond, it will be favorable relative to how they dealt with that issue. So, I'm going to move on to the multi-year projections and let Meg talk about it. And I think Meg has some, a spreadsheet too that she's going to go over. But do you want to start on page 187? Is that where we're at?
167?
Yeah, 167. It's darker here.
Glasses.
Good evening. As you know, that part of the budgets, all three budgets, the adopted first interim and second interim budget, we're required by the state to provide multi-year projections to make sure, to ensure that we can maintain our 3% reserve for all three years. So, as you have already seen, the 2010-11 budget, that's in your first column on page 167. The 1112 and the 1213 are in the next two columns over C and E. I'm not going to go through like I usually do because you guys have been through this a lot and you understand the multi-year projections. And I know we're down for time. But I do want to point out a few things that are different this year than you've seen before. And so, on, in this, in A.I., A1I, you see a negative in year 1112, column C, you see a negative $2.8 million. And in this, I'm sorry, let's go down to the, the one below it, which is J. And I have glasses on. So, you see the negative 1.6 million.
Other adjustments?
Other adjustments. The way we showed the 3.85% that hit of the $2.6 million that the revenue limit district, our secondary district, is going to take, part of that is offset by the actual state aid that we are going to get. So, instead of taking it from the categorical funds, because that's the only place the state can take it, I showed it in here as a reduction to property taxes. So, for example, I have $2.6 million negative. 1 million is going to be offset by the apportionment, the state aid apportionment. So, now I have another 1,600,000. That, I decreased my property taxes to show that somehow our revenue is going to be decreased by 1.6. The state can only take it from our categoricals, but we weren't, we had not decided whether we're going to take it from the sites or just backfill it by property taxes, which would be less. You see what I'm saying? And I'll show, I'll show a better slide of this later. It'll clarify everything. But on this line, that's what that 1.6 negative is in the revenue area.
May I just ask on this, Mr. Herron, if, is that really because you're working with a set form that doesn't make allowances for all these strange things that are going on?
These are, these are all, almost all hand-entered numbers. I mean, there are calculations, but it's not like the detail that you guys get in the '01, you know, in the 10, 10, 11 budget. This is all I have to work with. So, you have to kind of not, you have to be creative in getting the, everything to balance. So, that's, and that, the same thing happens in 1213. And the reason why it gets less is we do have a larger COLA on 1213. So, we get more state aid as the district, in the revenue limit district. Also in that number is the excess property taxes. Because they're going to take that too, also through the categorical funds, but it really is no excess property taxes. Whereas probably, I don't know, first or second interim, when we thought we were going to be basic aid, we were showing excess property taxes as a positive in that line. And now, we have to show it as a negative because they're going to take it away. So, basically, in the rest of the revenues, I kept all the federal revenues flat, except adjusting to the ADA, a decrease in ADA. And then I did the same thing in the state revenues. However, I did add the COLA because we do get a COLA in 1112 and 1213. At least at this moment, we do.
Meg, and the property tax values for the elementary district?
Yeah, the property taxes I, I projected to be flat for 1011, 1112. And then in 1213, I increased it by 0.5%. So, I'm very, very, very conservative on my multi-year projections as far as property taxes are concerned.
Mrs. Parker?
Can I just ask you on your methodology on that? Because you can go to School Services of California for the revenue limit district. But for the basic aid district, I don't know that there's a gold standard for what you use to project property tax increase or decrease.
Well, actually, what I, I did on 1011 is I kept it flat from what we got this year. However, when we were in like first or second interim, we only saw like a 0.2% in the elementary and a 2.2% in the high school district. We get these estimates, we'll have an estimate for sure by August from the county treasurer.
For 1011? But if I went and looked...
Oh, for 1011, yeah, for 1011, yes.
If I went and looked at Cold Spring, Montecito Union, Galita Union, and Hope, would I see any consistency for our feeder districts? So, they all are saying different numbers?
Yep. And that's what we hear from them too.
That just doesn't give me a... I mean, not that there's any confidence really in the School Services of California numbers because I know that those changed by Sacramento, but...
Yeah, I, I, I think it's more difficult because of the, the regionalized or localized nature of your tax bases.
Right, and...
And we have little history too. And that's another thing that works against us.
Well, we don't, we have little history as a basic aid district, but there's a tremendous history of what the property taxes have done.
That's true.
And I, I just, I think it would be helpful in the document somewhere to say, we looked at history, we looked at house sales, we looked at economic forecasts, we looked at permits pulled.
Usually, what we look at is talking to other public agencies and they're dependent on the same taxes. I mean, we could put that in, and they're probably more sophisticated in their analysis, but we could do that.
Even if they have the county. And, and I mean, we also have to consider the, the trends in real estate where sometimes high-end properties are selling more and lower-end properties are selling more. And so, that would account for differences in some of these districts that are completely seasonal and, and based on the recession and the whole housing crisis.
But one thing that you have to realize is we're in like, we're a double-edged sword right now. If we get more property taxes, they will take it away. If we go up in ADA and our revenue limit, they will take it away. So, whatever we do right now, they're going to take it away.
We're, we're, yeah.
Until we reach a certain point.
Yeah, I, I know, but that, and we've talked about that. I like to call it the financial doldrums because, you know, we're, we've got our toe in the bathtub in basic aid. Soon as we get there, we get the fair share calculation imposed on us. At the same time, you have the secondary district, which is obviously not growing. And it would have to be, been growing by leaps and bounds to outstrip what's going on or to overcome the revenue limit deficit plus the 3.85%. You've got the elementary that, on the natural, is not declining fast enough to get it deep into basic aid. And you've got AV that's not, that's anemic and not growing at all. So, if you look the confluence of those factors, it's not a good place to be.
Superbic storm.
It's not anything we created, but that's the situation we're in. Okay.
Okay, so revenues are pretty, remain flat. And now, the, if you look down on 2011-12, the C column, down in the certificated salary area, once again, I point out that I only put this in as a placeholder. That doesn't mean we're going to take it out of certificated. But if we take, if we bury it somewhere in the fours and fives and just take out 4.5 million, you don't see that we have to make the cuts. You just see that we have a fund balance. So, I make sure that it sticks out, that this is what it takes to get us to a positive or an increase in fund balance of $394,000 down there on line C in column C. Now, I want to be cautious about that because until first interim comes, we will not add the donation accounts. Some of those donation accounts for, like the Bauer Foundation and the arts are in there. But we do have a quite, a large PTAs who donate money that will pay for other, you know, expenses, salaries included. So, that amount will go up, our 3% will need to go up. You know, there could be other things that we haven't contemplating that happen in 1011.
Meg, in 910, could you highlight, I don't know who has the, the structural deficit and 3.8 million in the first column, Meg?
Yeah, right here.
So, when we were talking about those graphs, that's what's going on in those graphs, so...
Okay, so on the, on 169 is just our restricted side of the budget. And again, for revenues, I left the federal flat, only adjusted to ADA and the state adjusted to ADA and also by the COLA. On page seven, 172 is what I really would like you to look at, is that you can see that in 910, or 1011, our, our percentage is 3.82. For, so we're required... I'm sorry, we're required to have a 3% reserve. So, in 1011, we're 3.28, 3.69 in 1112, and at 4.77 in 1213. So, even with these massive cuts that we've made, we're barely making our reserve amount. And this, this 3.69 is, you know, contemplating that we make the 4.5 million in cuts for 1011.
Can I ask you one question? You do not have a placeholder for cuts going into 1213 though.
No, I don't.
And so, the dilemma here is, is if we had a reserve of 8 or 9%, you could make half the cuts because you can see that going into 1213, you don't have a structural deficit, but we're going to have to take the, we're going to have to bite the whole enchilada because otherwise, we're not going to make our reserve on a multi-year basis. Now, I'm also discounting if we have a better year-end closing than is projecting, but I don't think it's going to be that much better, but it could give us some help.
And this is what every county office wants to see, is three S's down here to show that we do meet our reserve, and we're required to do that. Last year, we did not show that we made our reserve three years out to, to make sure that they under, everybody understood that we have to do something pretty dramatic and we got called out on it. So, we make sure that we do what we have to do to show them that we're going to plan to make sure those cuts are made.
Mr. Herron, may I ask another quick question? Just for clarification on that 4.5 million in cuts. I assume most of it is secondary. No, okay, I'm not going to make that assumption anymore. 4.5 million in cuts, is that for 1011?
For 10, for 1112.
For 1112. So, we'll do it in 1011, for 1112.
We'll do it in 1112.
Okay, so, you're not contemplating mid-year cuts?
No.
Okay.
Not unless the governor comes out with something outrageous.
But, but remember, it was the board's desire to make mid-year cuts for, you know, the subsequent fiscal year. So, we will probably come back right after summer with some ideas. And, you know, we'll probably come back and ask for board direction about a timeline and how you want to do this and at what pace. You know, in my mind, the variables that are still out there, the adoption of the state budget, year-end close, and then we'll be in a position to come back and relook at it and tell you this is the number. And quite possibly, we'll have to start getting to work. But it is for 1112.
Mrs. Deacon?
Can I ask a quick question too? And I know we're kind of obsessed with this property tax piece, but a 1% increase translates into how many dollars? Do we know, I mean, are you just going to that?
Um, actually, I didn't do a 1%, it's pretty easy. 1% is pretty easy to figure once you get onto the, into the property tax area. So, I, you're all familiar with this. This is the secondary condensed version of the revenue limit. You've seen this a lot of times. And can you go up just a, yeah, there we are. And what I wanted to show you is how this 3.58% is calculated. So, what I did here is, here's the adopted budget, second interim, which is usually the accounting area, the, the time of period where we do all the ADA and everything. So, we, I always use second interim. And then the second interim from 1213. So, if you go over here, we take the 67 million dollars that we expect to get undeficited revenue, because here's the deficit, right? So, this is the undeficited revenue limit. We take, we pull it over here, we times it by 3.85%, and that's how we get the 2.6, okay? This is the less state aid, which you'll see down here. And so, we offset the 2.6 with the $1 million of state aid. Because they'll take it, we will never see it, it doesn't come our way. So, that leaves us 1.5 million that we need to come up with. And that's why I took it out of property taxes, because we don't know how we're going to do it. We don't know if we're going to let it, you know, actually take it from categoricals or, you know, take it out of the unrestricted balance. So, we do that for each year. Now, it gets less due to the COLA, see? It's okay. So, what we do here is, as you can see, this grows because of the, the COLA is placed in... Okay, right there is good. So, so our, you can see that our revenue limit, our state aid is going up because I've kept the, the property taxes flat and I have added the COLA. If the property taxes go up, this will go down, okay? But this number will basically stay the same. So, then we owe 2.6 million, so we get to offset it by 1.5 million. So, now we only have a million, okay, to fund. The same over here. So, it gets smaller as we go. Can you go down to the elementary, please? Okay, so I did the same situation in the elementary district. However, all I needed to use, I did the excess property taxes. So, what I wanted to compare is the unfair share, that I like to call it, a 5.81%, and that's 1.5 million, but it's the lesser of the two. So, we take the 2.0, the 291,000. And then each year, it's different. As you can see, we're, because of the COLA and the flat property taxes, we are not in basic aid by very much. So, we're, but, but that's, in a way, that's good because we're giving them less. We don't have less.
It wouldn't matter.
It wouldn't matter. This, you know, we could be, well, we could be 1,499,900, we'd have to give it to them.
And when you talk about the COLA in the elementary district, you're saying the revenue limit entitlement is being increased by the COLA.
That's right.
And that relationship to your flat property taxes keeps us in this kind of limbo.
Right. But if property taxes go up, that number will get bigger and we'll give it to the state.
Until when?
Until we hit 1.5 million, 1, yeah, until we hit this number.
So, I'm sorry, because I still am not sure, and maybe I could be doing the math in my head, but 1% bump in property tax would equal how many dollars?
Okay, can you, okay, there's elementary right there. So, 1% would be 2.7 million. Is that right? No.
207.
207. My math is better. I want to do my math.
It would have to jump a lot before we'd even have excess of the 1.5 million.
Yeah, it's a bigger, it's a bigger increase with the high school.
Just take the 1.5 divided by 278, and there you go. That'll tell you the number.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the budget?
I will make that motion to approve the 2010-11 budget. I do have one other quick question, however.
Let's get a second for that. And we'll get the motion on the floor.
Okay. My, my quick question is, there's so much information in this document. It may be in here somewhere. And I, and that is, do we show someplace in our budget how much we spend per pupil? I know that we can get that information on the California Department of Education Statistics website, runs about a year behind.
Does that do that on the SACS extract when we have to do the 55, 60%? You know, when you, when you, the SACS extract that shows you got to meet the ed code requirements and, you know, unified has to be 55, high school have to be anywhere?
Yeah, that's on the CEI.
Yeah, that's a, I don't know if this will answer your question or not, but I'm looking for it.
I saw that, those percentages in there.
It doesn't give a per DA.
But I didn't see a per DA number.
I can do that real quick.
Well, I don't need it necessarily real quick, but I think it would be good information, especially, it might be interesting to see it historically, to see that number drop, you know, how much we're, we're spending restricted and unrestricted per student on average over the past three or four years as the recession has taken more and more of a toll.
Let's plan to include that in the board brief. In fact, we'll include this in the...
In fact, we'll include this in the board brief as well because it's not in the budget report.
I, I think there's two other things. You just kind of jarred my memory about something. As one is, I'm not sure if Meg has it up here, but you can see the total amount of dollars lost in revenue limit, like the twenty million since this whole thing started. And then the other thing that's notable is, you know, we've always kind of, you know, people ask you what your general fund budget, and you know, it's a hundred and nineteen, hundred and twenty. If you look here, it's a hundred and eight now. So that kind of drives it home, you know? It's an incredible shrinking budget. And we have offset some of that by being able to live on larger reserves, but now it's kind of the rubber's hitting the road. Okay. Do you have that calculation, Meg, or?
Actually, that's on my second interim calculation because I did this one on this one.
That's okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Rather than start E two at the moment, I think we'll take a ten-minute break and come back at nine o'clock. Transition Guidelines for the District Special Education Advisory Group, the Action Plan Manager Contract, and the Schedule of Future Special Education Reports to the Board.
And Kerry Mills, our Director of Special Education, soon-to-be Executive Director of Special Education, will make the presentation.
Good evening. I have quite a few items tonight. So the first, I have one update item, and then I have four action items. So I'll just proceed through them unless you have any questions. So the update at the last board meeting, you requested that the priorities document have all of the items spelled out for you. And so Dr. Noel actually worked very hard on that document, and as did Dr. Miller. So between the two of them, you have the document in front of you, which you requested. And it's basically the priorities document. It has all of the FICMAT recommendations listed for your reference. And it also has the subgroup listed for you on the left-hand side that it pertains to. So that's just an update information item.
Thank you very much. It's very informative.
And I, I must say, Dr. Noel did quite a few other reports, and I'd just like to give him full credit for just a lot of contributions on the, on the FICMAT reports. So the first action item that I'd like to talk about is the Stakeholders' Work Group Basically, just for a little background, brief background, in June two thousand and nine, as you know, the FICMAT report recommended that the board form a stakeholders' work group, which they did. There was a board action of August eleventh, two thousand and nine, and just reading briefly, the goals of the work group, as stated in the motion, were to review the categories of recommendations, consolidate any duplicates, identify possible entities for implementation, and establish the suggested priority timeline. So the stakeholder work group has actually met eight times during this past year. The staff believes that the work group has accomplished these initial goals. The work group did break up into four subgroups, and those subgroups were communication, organizational structure, programs and services, and professional development. The subcommittees, they focused on all of the areas that were identified in the FICMAT report according to their subgroup. They identified initial timelines, basic tasks. They implemented many of the recommendations. And those recommendations and the priority areas will be used as a roadmap for the action plan that will be soon developed, actually within three months. So, um, as I mentioned, the, the staff does believe that the goals of the stakeholders' work group have been met, and that the current configuration of the stakeholders' work group should come to an end. And we would like to continue to have the stakeholders involved and use them as resources, continue to meet in our subgroups. I think that was very effective in the subgroups, and we still need those. And we'll need their help in designing and implementing the action plan. Okay? Would you like me to go on to the next?
If we have public comment on this, Mr. Herr, and then I think maybe we need to hear everything at once and then have public comment before we make our various motions, or is that what your plan is?
Yes, 'cause when we have public comment, we'll have public comment on everything that she's talking about. So let's go through each of the steps. Mrs. Cordell?
Would we ask our questions about each one as we go, or will we wait until we've completed it to ask questions?
Let's have her present on all of them. And some of them may interact with each other.
Okay.
Okay, so the second action item is the approval of guidelines for the District Special Education Advisory Group. And basically, you have the five FICMAT recommendations that are in regard to forming the district advisory group. I've listed those for your reference, and I won't go into reading those, but you have those listed out. The reason I'm bringing you this tonight is actually the first one, number thirty-five, that we establish a district-sponsored advisory group coordinated by the Executive Director of Special Education using guidelines approved by the governing board. So that is what we are doing this evening. Again, to give you a little bit of background, the stakeholders' work group met recently on June sixteenth, and we discussed this very agenda item, one agenda item only, which was the district-sponsored advisory group. What we, what we, after public comments, I divided the groups into, I think there were five discussion groups. We had mixed membership. We had staff, parents, community members, and we had one board member, which you couldn't divide into all of the groups. But we had, the task for them was to provide input on all of these, these five areas, which they did. So they had about twenty minutes to talk in their individual subgroups and to provide input. Then we got back together, and we went over each of those items, and the groups got to report out and share their input. So down toward the bottom, you have recommended guidelines that I'd like you to consider tonight for, for this advisory group. And I'd like to just tell you that the guidelines are a combination of input from the stakeholders, and they all are also some recommendations that I am putting forward as mine. So there was not consensus on every single item. It's a large group, and we did have consensus on most items. But just for an example, we had some groups recommended that this be a Brown Act configuration, and some groups recommended that it not be. So basically, the reason that I'm recommending that it not be is to give us the flexibility to have good discussion, and if something comes up, we can talk about it without having to worry about agendizing it in advance. So it just gives us more flexibility. I don't want to go through all of the recommendations. I know you have them in front of you. This is a group that I see co-facilitated by myself and a parent chairperson, so I don't see it as just me running it. I see it as a partnership. I'd like to have it be solution-oriented so that the concerns that will be brought forward can be general in nature, not specific to one student, but certainly, concerns can be brought forward as a general concern. And then I'd like to have the group produce possible solutions and work together toward The one area that I don't think this, that this is, is an area where parents discuss one particular problem or one student. And if you look on number thirty-six E, I talk about a protocol being developed for parents to have an avenue to discuss concerns privately with the inappropriate staff member so that that will still be able to be carried out. Basically, in number thirty-seven, just talks about the balanced representation of disabilities, ages, grades, students, and ethnicities. I'm gonna be asking principals from each school site to recruit parent representatives, not to select them, but just to recruit them. Membership, I'd also like to have one certificated, one classified, and one administrator in addition to myself on the board for the advisory group. And I'd also like to have a board member that would serve as a volunteer, as a liaison. And number thirty-eight, to cover a wide range of topics, and those are listed for you. In addition, the stakeholders recommended that we have the topics of transition and disability awareness added, and I'm recommending that as well. And then lastly, the FICMAT recommendation was to have an annual special education staff recognition event. It recommends events for providing exemplary service to students. And what I am recommending is a slight contrast, is to have a recognition event for all special education teachers and all special education instructional assistants without having to pick out those that are just exemplary. So I'd like to honor all of them. And, and then I gave us a small little startup budget in case we need to have a budget to operate. And that would be out of the R of funds. So shall I go on to the next?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The next action item I have is the approval of the Action Plan Manager Contract. Again, to give you a brief background, on April nineteenth, this was at a stakeholder work group. Dr. Noel actually recommended hiring a project manager. The, the stakeholder work group approved that or recommended that to go forward. On May twenty-fourth, the stakeholder work group approved the completion of an action plan within three months, using the work group committee members as resources. Basically, the action plan manager would be vital in implementing the action plan, informing the action plan. Again, Dr. Noel brought us the Concept Draw Project software, which the district has purchased. We do have a training set up for July the eighth so that the action plan manager, as well as myself and the other directors, can be trained in this. The action plan manager would be tracking the progress of our action plan for us, would be helping us design the action plan, tracking the progress, checking with the committee members to see how we are doing on our, on our, all of the items that are included in the action plan. The action plan manager will be reporting directly to me. And specifically, I am recommending Eric Hansi as the action plan manager. Eric's resume is attached, and Eric has been an active member of the stakeholders' work group, and I think that he would do a great job. He was actually very helpful to Dr. Noel at one of those stakeholder work groups when, when he actually was stuck on one of the, the Concept Draw software, little complications. But Eric was able to help us out, so I am recommending that he be hired. And then the last action item I have is the approval of schedule for future special education reports to the board. To give you background, as you well know, practically, at every board meeting, we've had a special education report. Many of those reports have focused on the stakeholders' work group and on the FICMAT report. The regular board reports were in response to a FICMAT recommendation, specifically number fifty, schedule regular reports to the board by the superintendent on the progress or of the reorganization and action plan for special education. I am recommending that, beginning with the two thousand and ten-eleven school year, that the executive director will present a monthly status report on special education to the school board. So this would be a change from every school board meeting to once a month. And I think that concludes my items.
Public comments?
We have several people who have requested to speak, so if there's any others, they should come forward at this time. Tom Bream, followed by Leslie Sanderson.
Good evening. Stakeholders' Work Group Transition. Sounds like a phase-out of a, of an action committee, if you will, of a group of parents, vested, uh, parents, passionate, dedicated parents that have affected what, what, what the first speaker tonight mentioned about a cultural change. This group of parents feels responsible for a, a shift in the culture in the special ed department. And I think they've done a pretty good job up till now, and, and I, I can evidence that based upon, my fifth grader has had the best year he's ever had at the Santa Barbara School District, special ed child. I'm sure you're all aware of his situation. And I'm not real good at this public speaking part, so bear with me for a moment. And I'm worried that we're gonna slip, we're gonna lose some of that, what we've gained. And, and the reason I say that is because I see some, some hiring practices that we've seen in the past, as evidenced by the revolving door at the executive director's position in special ed. And it concerns me that this group of parents, dedicated, hard-working volunteers, are gonna get excluded from this process now. And it, I think there's a slippery slope that we might go down, and it concerns me. So I, I really am talking to the board that you'll, you'll not approve this transition, that you'll look at it and for what we think it might be, and it might be an exclusion of a group of parents that have been really involved and don't want to be left out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bream. Leslie Sanderson, followed by Sherry Rae McKinney.
Hi, Leslie Sanderson. Just have a few comments about the stakeholders' meeting and the parent advisory group. I did have the opportunity last week, or the week before, to go to the stakeholders' group, even though I'm not a stakeholders' member. And there were several concerns I had, and the first one being, although there was a lot of representation from staff, administration, and different community organizations, there really were very few parents at this meeting that were talking about the advisory group that's supposed to be a parent advisory group. There was actually only one parent with a special needs child in the district who is also a stakeholders' mem, member, and also happens to be a member of an organization as well. So she's holding several hats. And then there was no vote of any sort regarding these guidelines. The guidelines that Dr. Mills presented were just like recommendations from individual little small groups, so there was no voting done on that. There was no discussion regarding the current parent advisory group that's been parent-generated, the CAC. What they've done in the past year, or what the role, if any, they would have in the new advisory group, none of that was discussed at the stakeholders' meeting. I did discuss it in my own little group, just because I felt that parents from the CAC actually want it to be, remain an independent group and not actually a district group. Just so that you know, that the CAC has been working on some of the goals from the FICMAT report, I've attached for all of you the things that the CAC group has been working on in the past year, and all the things that we have been doing to try to meet some of those needs in the past year. And the stakeholders' meeting was adjourned without public, further public comment, 'cause we kind of ran out of time. So we didn't actually bring up the current advisory group in the entire large group discussion. And we did pose this question to, previously to the CAC group, and the overwhelming member response was that it remain independent of the district because unfortunately, at this time, the parents still do not have a lot of trust in the district, and they fear retaliation.
Thirty seconds.
It was also brought up that parents shouldn't bring up individual concerns, and I totally agree with Dr. Mills that we need to have some kind of mechanism for parents to be able to give their individual concerns so that the meetings can be more productive. I think that's one of the things that if, either it's a district-sponsored or the, the current advisory group. So down, in conclusion, I made a recommendation that actually, it might be nice to have Bill Gillespie come back and give his views on what his. Gillespie come back and give his views on what his views were, actually about what this parent advisory group should be consisting of, and maybe surveying the parents, because right now, I think the parents are kinda overwhelmingly in favor of having it remain independent. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sanderson. Sherri Rae McKinney, followed by Marilyn Lauer, followed by Marsha Eichelberger.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Rae McKinney, and I'm the mother of a son with a specific learning disability who struggles with reading, writing, and math. I have closely followed the FICMAT report, the development of the Special Education Advisory Council, and the stakeholders' group. I want to express my deep disappointment that the stakeholders' group and whomever else makes these decisions has chosen to disregard the recommendation of the FICMAT report that stated, quote, "Consider hiring an ombudsman for special education for at least one year to build trust and confidence in the system between the parents and the district." An ombudsman, as the dictionary defines it, is one who investigates reported complaints as from students or consumers, reports findings, and helps to achieve equitable settlements, a pretty important position. But when the stakeholders' group prioritized the hundred and fifty-eight FICMAT recommendations, the position of ombudsman never made it to the action plan. Instead, it was relegated to the Neverland of "to be determined." And now that the stakeholders' group apparently disbanded last week, I guess that the notion of an ombudsman to build trust and confidence has also been abandoned, leaving parents wondering what could be a higher priority. As a result, parents like me and many others who I have met through the three degrees of separation that we have here in Santa Barbara, we struggle together and on our own. We educate ourselves and each other in the absence of a much-needed ombudsman. We email each other, we meet in coffee houses, and we agonize together with no particular resources, except for those that we find, and no independent party to help us. I'm particularly concerned because of a quote that I read that Secretary of Education Arnie Duncan stated recently. Academic success, as defined by high school graduation, can be predicted with reasonable accuracy by knowing someone's reading skill at the end of third grade. A person who is not at least modestly skilled reader by that time is unlikely to graduate from high school. My son, my eighth-grade son, falls into that risky category. So my summer reading includes titles like Dyslexia for Dummies, Parenting a Struggling Reader, and The Teacher Who Couldn't Read. It also includes a book by probably the most famous person in Santa Barbara who embraces his learning disability, who's Paul Orfala, founder of Kinko's.
Thirty seconds.
He wrote about his learning disabilities in a book called Copy This, and Lessons from a Hyperactive Dyslexic, who turned a bright idea into one of America's best companies. And he concludes his introduction by saying, "How many innovators, I wonder, are lost to us, simply because their talent and skills cannot be adequately perceived or measured? Kids who are Paul Orfilas in the making are getting lost in this district, and parents like me have nowhere to turn." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. Marilyn Lauer, followed by Marsha Eichelberger.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Lauer, and I've been a teacher here in this district for nine years, almost ten years now. And I was involved in the entire process of reviewing and renewing a special education department. I've personally experienced the eight directors in the last nine years, and I've experienced what might have been considered by some a type of retaliation twice along the way. I don't claim that, but I've been told that I should. I'm here to represent what I know now as a special ed teacher at this point in time. And I want to echo Sherri's comment that there are teachers as well who sit in coffee houses and who go on walks on the beach and who email and call each other for answers, because we are still not getting the answers that we need. The FICMAT report was commissioned by existing administration and perhaps through a lack of any alternative, has become a sort of bible, and the only change that the district is choosing to consider, and I've been a member of it, and I don't, and I do think that it has met a lot of its charge, particularly as was stated in writing, but I don't think it's finished, and I don't think the overarching goal that I had as a teacher has been met at all. I'm sad to say that my basic understanding of the global teaching experience in this district in special ed has not changed that much. Given that system change takes time, and I know this, my charge and my main wish all along is just for really good, strong leadership and better communication. I still don't know exactly who to turn to when I have a question about hiring practices or about what programs should look like. I'm still hearing stories about schools who are choosing to say that they cannot serve a certain student, and then other schools are receiving these students and serving them, even though they're understaffed or underprepared. Teachers are asking the same questions that they were asking a year ago. Communication is not, has not improved significantly enough for me to feel comfortable to recommend to parents where to go or what to do. I think understanding of policies and procedures is still very unclear, and yes, it takes time to put these things into place and to put them into writing, but there has not been an all-staff meeting in a year for all special education staff.
Thirty seconds.
And I would just like to see someone step up and be enthusiastic, someone that I can have confidence in. I've yet to gain the confidence that I need in my own department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer.
Good evening, board. I want to go back in time as a refresher course. The special ed stakeholder group was formed in the first place because it was recognized that virtually no one, aside from the district-level administration, had a voice in shaping the services and programs that students were either supposed to be benefiting from or the district was supposed to be providing. Before you move to dissolve the group, let's ask ourselves, do all the stakeholders have another means to express their needs? If not, then dissolving the stakeholder group and eliminating the stakeholder process is premature. A second major reason the stakeholder group was formed was to develop a collaborative vision and action plan to move the special ed department's programs and systems forward and respond to the reality that profound systemic dysfunction existed at all levels and would require multiple perspectives to correct. Has the systemic dysfunction identified in the FICMAT report been corrected? If the answer's no, then dissolving the stakeholder process is premature. A third reason that the stakeholder process was created was to allow the district-level administration to learn from its own constituents what they need, what works, and what's either ineffective or burdensome. Has the district administration done that? Have you fully explored and investigated all issues from all perspectives, that you no longer need your stakeholders bringing those issues to you? Again, the answer's no. When you have a board meeting and no one comes to tell you about problems in the special ed department, when there's a special ed staff meeting and no personnel bring concerns about lack of programs, materials, or support, when the due-process filings drop off to nearly zero because your IEP process has become the collaborative process that federal law intends it to be, then you may consider dissolving your group. If you can't imagine such a time now or in the very near future, we're not ready to have that conversation. As we enthusiastically welcome our new executive director, Dr. Mills, the stakeholder process should continue to be a crucial element in her moving forward to build collaborative relationships of trust across all levels of participants. The stakeholder process should be her primary avenue for reaching all stakeholders at once. Advocacy fatigue strikes us all, but that should be a call for voluntary replacement of individuals who request to be relieved by their colleagues or counterparts. This should not equate with disillusion of the stakeholder process. We've come too far to lose the positive momentum we have. As a participant who's attended nearly every meeting since this process began, I urge you to stay the course and allow the process to complete itself. And only when we find ourselves with truly nothing more to accomplish should we open the dialogue to move the group from direct involvement in policy and implementation to one of oversight and accountability. With the changing of the guard in our special ed leadership, I look forward to that day with great optimism. I am confident that together, all things are possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eichelberger. That concludes public comment.
Okay. To the board. I guess one question I have before we get started. Do all of these items need board approval?
We would like your approval on all four of those.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I think we're, we looked at, as far as the stakeholders' work group, the board formed that as a Brown Act group, so we believe that the board then, if you approve the transition, would need to then approve that. Guidelines were also part of the FICMAT, it says district-approved guidelines. Action Plan Manager, we usually, we've been talking about that, so we brought that to the board, or, excuse me, the contract. And Dr. Sarvis wanted to actually bring the schedule in planning the board meetings to the board for the reports.
Well, that was because I received a request from a couple of board members to do that.
To the board. Mrs. Parker?
I'm glad, Mr. Herron, that you brought that up first, because that has been one of my overriding concerns lately, and I felt really frustrated at our last meeting and also very inarticulate. But my concern is, is Mr. Herron and I, we've been going through California School Boards Association training, talking about the role of the board versus the role of staff. And what I'm seeing over the course of almost the past two years at this point is we've been so concerned about the situation in special education and reforming special education and making, moving forward and making sure that we're making progress, that in some cases, I think that the board has really gone below what the CACBA calls their, the line on their famous clock, and has sort of stepped in on micromanaging what's going on in special ed. And in fact, I'm afraid that we're starting to impede the, with all of our best wishes and concerns that we want to make progress, I'm concerned that we're actually slowing things down. There's nothing here, I mean, I can see, because we took a board action to do all the stuff in the first place. It makes perfect sense to be taking board action on the items that are before us, but I really just, I hope that the board will keep that in mind over the next few months. I do want to speak, on the special education advisory group, I have a quick question for you, Dr. Mills, and that is that the, you refer to it as the advisory group, but then on item thirty-seven, it switches to the advisory board. And is there going to be a board for this group? Is there a distinction that you're making on number thirty-seven?
This is the actual language used in the FICMAT report, so it's not my language. I copied it directly. But my vision of it, based on their language, is that they do see a board as part of this advisory group.
As part of the group.
So that there would be a board.
I guess what's a little confusing about it is that then it says, "A, principals from each school recruit parent representative who serves on the advisory group."
Right.
And that's not quite the same thing as the advisory board, since that would be a smaller, and presumably, you'd be creating bylaws, there'd be a chairperson, there's clearly gonna be a parliamentarian. But I'm just pointing that out. I also want to point out that we don't, we haven't made, the district hasn't made guidelines for any of our other parent advisory groups. Some of them have bylaws that they have created for themselves. And I just want to be super careful here to be clear that we are only approving the guidelines and not the board, not the group itself, because then it would be a Brown Act group, because it was board-created. So I also want to clarify that on the comments about the current independent parent advisory group, the CAC, it has done so much terrific work over the past year and a half. I have never seen these things as too mutually exclusive, and it was actually great to hear that so many parents from CAC want it to remain independent, because I think it should remain independent. There's a role for that in this area and in our district, but it doesn't negate the necessity for the district to have a district parent group. And so I think I would like to go ahead and make motions, just to get them out there, on the three easiest things probably on this, and that is, one, to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve the schedule for future special education reports to the board.
Second?
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Let's do, if you're gonna make a motion for each one, we need to take each motion as is made.
Okay.
So you want to start with that one? So the motion is to approve the schedule for future special education reports to the board.
I think this is perfectly reasonable, and I think we were all anticipating we would move to this, and I think we all feel that the special ed staff is really working very hard, and we'd rather have them spend their time on the action plan and addressing parent concerns and teacher concerns, rather than preparing reports for us.
Is the intent of the motion to cancel the previous motion that has been passed by this board to have one at every meeting, and so there'll be no more reports until school starts in two thousand and ten?
No. It's for the ten-eleven school year.
Yeah, but currently the...
Right, so that starts July ninth, or July first for the ten-eleven school year. So we have, I would assume that any, unless there's...
Okay.
We're having a special meeting, I don't think it's necessary for us to have a special ed update at a special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But it's after July first, our first board meeting after that.
Okay, good, okay.
It would go into effect.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the Action Plan Manager Contract.
Second?
Opposed, it was passed four oh with Dr. Noel absent.
I'd also have some comments on this one, since we haven't each had a chance to speak on the different items.
Go ahead.
I have been present at the stakeholder meetings, I think all except one, and I was there when Dr. Noel originally proposed this position, and I also watched Mr. Hansi help very adeptly with the software, and I know he's a special education parent. And I think that, at least from my perspective, and certainly, you know, checking out his resume and his references is important as it would be with hiring anyone, but I think that getting someone who has both of those pieces, you know, being familiar with the district, having a child, a special ed child, having been a member of the stakeholder group, plus having the technical expertise, is a bonus. And so I'm very favorably disposed to hire him to fulfill this work.
Can you tell me what Dr. Noel's motion was in the stakeholders' group?
I don't have his motion right in front of me.
If I recall, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a one-year project. This is quite a bit different than that.
He was recommending a director-level position.
Well, that's what I'm, his motion was for something totally different than this.
But that motion was not passed.
I'm not sure. I thought it was on the, well, maybe it wasn't.
It was, we discussed a variety of ways to fulfill the need for a project manager to develop the action plan, but it's my definite recollection that there was never a motion passed for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar position.
That's correct.
In fact, I think Dr. Noel retreated from that position and agreed, and there's other stakeholders here, but...
And is the intent still on this motion, although it references the three-month, I'm forgetting, I can't see where it is.
Six months?
No, well, no, three months. It mentions...
Oh, the action plan?
The completion of the action plan within three months, but the contract is for six months. Are you negating that three-month, three-month recommendation, and is the plan to have this take a six-month process?
Well, I think that the development of the action plan will take three months, but then we have to implement all of those recommendations, and so this person would be tracking that progress, so it would be past the three-month time.
Is three months realistic with the summer, and you have no staff?
It's not terribly realistic, given that we have a very sparse staff right now.
So why are we, why are we approving a three-month limit to get something done?
That was the recommendation of the stakeholders' group.
What is your recommendation?
It would be nice to have a little time into the school year to get this done, but there is basically very little staff. Dr. Brittenbass and myself are pretty much, we have one secretary right now.
Mrs. Swoski?
Could I clarify this? We're not asking for approval of that three-month. That was recommended in the stakeholders' group. We didn't bring that forward, because what we felt was, if we can get Mr. Hansi on here and start working... We didn't bring that forward, because what we felt was, if we can get Mr. Hansi on here and start working, give him six months for that, we don't know exactly how long the completion's going to take. If he gets right on board and can start, maybe it will work quickly. But we didn't want to tie us down to exactly three months. Our hopes are that that first building of it would even take a shorter time. But that's not what the action is. The action is just the approval of the contract for him.
Since it says that, you know, within three months, and I think that was even referred to a couple times, I wanted to make it very clear that we're not dictating three months to you. At least, I don't think we are.
No, I was strictly making a motion to approve the contract for the Action Plan Manager.
And that's what I seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, four zero, Dr. Noel not present.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the guidelines for the district's special education advisory group.
Second? And could I discuss now too?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I will volunteer to be the board liaison unless anyone else would like that position. I feel since I've been a part of this process that I could bring that, my experience to that group. And I also agree that the C I A C group is really, really valuable, and that maintaining their independence is really important. And so, while I do see the need for a district group as well, that parallels our other parent district groups, I certainly hope C I A C will continue to provide the role that it has. I do just also want to note that I think it's going to be critical that the principals are involved in this process, because I know that Dr. Mills is really, really busy. And if we're hoping to get this up and running for the school year, and obviously, it'll take a month or two for them to learn who all their parents are and reach out to them and try to recruit them. But I do want to shift a lot of that work effort onto the principals and away from Dr. Mills in terms of facilitating the recruiting of parents, because I think that's really important.
I have a question, and again, it goes back to Mrs. Parker's comment. You know, it's an advisory group, advisory board, advisory committee, special education parent advisory committee. I mean, I think that needs to be cleaned up. But also, Dr. Sarvis, can you, what differentiates a group that is a Brown Act group versus not a Brown Act? If it's a district-sponsored advisory group, is, how do we avoid it being a Brown Act committee?
Well, your guidelines specifically declare that it is not a Brown Act committee, and it is not a committee formed by the board. You're simply approving the guidelines.
That satisfying?
No.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, yes, the distinction of approving the guidelines and approving the committee would be that we would approve the individuals on the committee if we were approving the committee? Or what is the distinction between approving the committee and approving the guidelines? Because I, to me, this feels like approving the committee, but tell me what makes it not approving the committee?
If you would like to add language, you would be approving a staff committee.
That's-
And you could insert that word. We have a number of other staff committees. In fact, when I became superintendent, we had board-established committees all over the place. They were all constantly violating the Brown Act. They were, they were not meeting appropriately. They were not scheduling and agendizing things appropriately. They often didn't get quorums, they couldn't meet. We couldn't get very much done. So, we changed all of those to staff meetings.
Can I ask then, are the, say for instance, this Secondary Parent Advisory Council or the E L A C, are those staff committees?
Yes, they're staff committees.
Even though they're mainly staffed by parents?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And I would just like to go back and clarify this issue about whether it's a board or a committee or- I think that this was just a function, truthfully, of how the FICMAT people wrote this, and they were-
This is exactly verbatim of what the FICMAT people wrote.
And I think they were inconsistent in their use of language. And so, I don't think there's any special meaning to be attached by whether they used the word board or committee. And so, I think it's up to us to make that determination. And I personally would like it to be, if we're going to be consistent, we call our other groups councils. Is that right?
Uh, committees.
Or committees, we call them committees. Okay, well, then I would just like to go with committee, and I want it to just be one group and not have subsets, but a single group made up of the individuals that are identified here.
So, you're talking about a C P A C, S E, Special Education Parent Advisory Committee?
Sounds good. And so, are you going to amend the, the motion to include those revisions? Maybe Mrs. Cordero wants to.
Mrs. Cordero?
No, I have a question, so.
Okay. If you, if you do make that amendment, I'll accept your amendment?
Yes. So, I would like to make that amendment, thank you.
Yes, and I'll accept that.
So, that's a staff C P A C, right?
A staff.
Thank you.
Now, the question is, if we have a board member assigned to the committee, does that make it a board committee?
No.
We have actually board, Kate Parker sits on our elementary and secondary parent advisory committee as a board.
You know, you just, it's not, it's not really an assignment. And as you heard, Mrs. Deacon was volunteering to go. It's, it's not something that we would include in terms of appointing in December.
Well, since it's included here, a board member could serve as a liaison.
It could.
Okay.
But it's not required.
My other more substantive comment is, in item 37, where it identifies the kind of diversity that the committee should strive for, or I would hope, should guarantee, that the committee should guarantee these, this level of diversity, I would like to include language, because I think there should be Spanish-speaking parents or Spanish-speaking representatives on that committee. So, can we add that? And can that, would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
What do you think your timeline is for this? These were not priorities, but now I presume they are. So, do you have a timeline? Do you need any parameters? What is our expectation? What is your expectation?
Well, I need the principals to be back at work and to get to know their parent community a little bit, so that they can recruit parents. So, I think we need to start after the school year begins, in a reasonable time for them to send representatives. And so, I would see starting this perhaps October or so.
By the end of the year?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry, I left out one additional question, I guess, or comment. I'm looking, I would like to see something here that says that the committee will make recommendations either to staff or to the board in the, in the reports that are given. And I don't see any, I, I don't see anything there that says that recommendations will be forthcoming.
Okay, so on, you're talking about 36B, presentations made to the board?
Well, it certainly could be there. It could be also, I was thinking, under 38, where it identifies the range of topics that the committee would examine. I would love to see, rather than just saying that the committee will cover these, that it would include that they would also make recommendations regarding those.
Okay, again, that's, that's FICMAT direct language, but I can change that.
On 36B, how about adding after the word board? You know, when presentations are made to the board, including recommendations as appropriate, they will be shared by the executive director and chairperson of the advisory group.
Sure, that sounds fine.
That sounds great, and I'll accept that revision.
My, my question is, what type of recognition can you do for $500? Don't you need more than that?
I was being conservative.
She can-
She'll be creative.
She can come forward without requests.
Here's a chance to get some now, if you-
I heard that, too.
I think that the committee will have to develop some goals. And then, once we develop some goals, we'll have to see if we need a budget to support those goals.
One party is more than five hundred? One party, unless Nancy can do it. Is Nancy still here? She can do a party for 500, can't you, Nancy?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, four zero, Dr. Noel absent. Regarding the approval of stakeholders' work group transition? Mrs. Deacon?
Just to offer a little bit of perspective on this, again, because I have been participating on this, I, I found the subcommittees really beneficial and of substance. And it's so much easier to get things accomplished in a smaller group than in the large group, although the large group worked hard, you know, to develop productive dialogue and provide suggestions. But I personally am in favor of transitioning away from the larger group, maintaining these smaller groups as resources. The reality is, is parent attendance has really shrunk at these stakeholder meetings. And I know we've heard from members of the public about how important it is to provide that avenue for them. And I'm incredibly hopeful that that avenue already exists in other forums to come, certainly here this evening, in every board meeting, but also to staff, to go to all the staff with their concerns. And I'm assuming that's, happens on an ongoing basis and will continue to do so. So, my inclination is, is to transition out of the larger group. I do, I'm concerned that there's very few parents that now are attending, and the group has just really shrunk a lot. And so, I, you know, I'm hoping that we'll be reinvigorated with this, this new group that's coming on board, that will provide some of the same functions. And I, one thing I would like to say, though, just to thank the stakeholders and to acknowledge all their work, is that when this action plan is finally developed, we need to do a good job of reaching out to them and inviting them and making sure that they're aware of when that's going to be presented to the board, so that they can all come and listen to that, because they were so instrumental in getting us to where we are now on that. So, that would be the one thing that I'd like to add to that, that we, ensure that they're very much invited to that presentation.
Mrs. Cordero?
I haven't attended those meetings, so I don't have the same perspective that you do. But I've met with parents, and I've talked to parents. And I've also been involved in processes before I was on the board that were reminiscent of this process. And I guess, I feel like if we, if we kind of dissolve the stakeholders group, we're, we're losing a piece that I'm not sure we're replacing. I think creating the district advisory committee, obviously by definition, that's to advise the district. And I think we're losing a part where parent, where the stakeholders were being able to raise some concerns that they have and ask questions and discuss topics. And so, I almost feel like we should have, you know, sort of a parent support group or maybe a little bit more substantial than a support group, but something where parents still have a place to come together. And as some of the speakers mentioned, whether it's just parent, and maybe not even just parents, staff, et cetera, to be able to discuss the issues that they're having, ask questions. And I go back to something that came up earlier, which was, I guess, you know, the whole, I know we started with the position of ombudsman, right? We had, but we changed the name to, I don't remember what it was.
Communication.
Communication liaison or something, parent communication liaison?
Consultant.
Or consultant. And I'm not, I'm really, truthfully, not sure of the status of that position at this point, because it seems like it has changed over the time that we've done that. So, when parents have questions, and I really want to go back to especially Spanish-speaking parents have questions, to whom would they direct those questions?
They would, currently, they would call staff. So, if we had a Spanish-speaking parent, then I would have to get someone to interpret for me or for the director that was taking that call.
What about our parent resource person?
The parent resource person, that is not any longer-
It doesn't exist anymore, right?
In existence. That was a temporary position.
So, I guess my, my bottom line is that I feel like we're losing something with the stakeholders group that isn't entirely being replaced by the advisory committee. And so, I would prefer, before we dissolve completely the stakeholder group, to figure out what piece is missing and come back with some plan for how that part is going to be addressed. So, that's my statement.
Mrs. Parker?
When the stakeholders group was created, it was given a very specific task. And so, I feel like, in a way, Mrs. Cordero, we're talking about kind of two different things at this point. And I can't remember who even made the original motion, but we certainly approved it. Was it Mr. Herron? We approved it, and we gave it very specific parameters. And so, in that sense, I feel like we need to move on from the stakeholders group. I see your point. I really do feel like the new Special Education Advisory Committee would give a forum. But certainly, there are some members of the stakeholders group that wouldn't be necessarily interested in that group. And I'm wondering if, and I'm certainly not going to give any, make a motion on this part, but I'm just wondering if there needs to be a broader community, you know, a time that the stakeholders are all invited again, maybe after the action plan is ready to come to the board, where they're just invited to come and, you know, maybe their needs as part of the communication piece to be quarterly meetings where it's not just the parent advisory group, all the former stakeholders are invited, just to give that forum, but to regularly have special education forums. But I, I feel like this particular task is completed.
I have really no issue. I believe the current work group process should come to an end. I believe a transition from the work group to a process that includes the stakeholders' work group as resources. I think that's fine. I'm not ready to accept that the stakeholders group itself go away, since the document I presented several months ago showed where the stakeholders had a certain role. Once you got to the three on the clock, staff took over. But for the rest of the time, you still give updates to the stakeholders. They're still worthy of getting feedback from. And so, I would like to see that the stakeholder work group, I'd like to see a stakeholder work group update quarterly during 2010, 2011, simply to bring the stakeholders back, give them an update of what's happening on the action plan, so they can see the results of their priorities. But it'd be, what Mrs. Parker's talking about, is bring them back as a group to get feedback from, they're the ones that set these priorities, they have a right to know how we're doing on them. I'd like to see, at least for the next school year, the stakeholders be updated on a quarterly basis, just so that they know what's going on and can see the results of their work. Mrs. Deacon?
One of my concerns is, is the perception of what this current stakeholders group consists of, because we haven't had a translator needed there in a long time. So, we know that it's not really representative of our parent population. And my hope by developing the parent committee is to broaden the diversity of representation. And currently, we have staff that attends, I mean, there's sometimes more staff than parents at the stakeholder group. So, to me, in many ways, the energy expended is taking away from action that we're asking our special ed staff to accomplish. I'm not averse to updates, but I, currently, I would say the stakeholder group mainly consists of staff, C I A C parents, and some advocates, including from the Dyslexia Awareness Center and a few other individuals. But it's not, I- But it's not, I think, what we originally envisioned as being a representative stakeholder group. So by continuing it, I'm not sure that we're fulfilling what has been our goal in terms of input from the stakeholder group. So again, my main concern, I guess, is the burden to the staff to do this when many of these people, staff are already involved. Hopefully, we'll have some of these parents that are on the stakeholder group segueing into this district committee, bringing in new parents, new stakeholders. And I, to me, it's a task that I think, I'm not sure if you weigh the costs and benefits, that we really end up on the benefit end of things. So that's not to say that we don't keep them informed and certainly give them, you know, an update. But having regularly scheduled meetings is problematic. We probably haven't had a quorum in a long time. And so I don't, I don't want these romantic images out there of what it is as opposed to what we might have hoped in the best world.
We're approving an awful lot of recommendations from them.
Well, it started out strong. I would actually like to make a motion to approve the stakeholders work group transition. And the language isn't more specific than that here, but to make a motion that we accept that the stakeholder group has, in fact, accomplished its original mandate and that we continue to utilize the subgroups as resources as we move forward. That's my motion.
And Mrs. Deacon, could that motion include that the stakeholders group be updated as needed during the 2010-11 school year? And that could be by report instead of by meeting, but...
That's fine. I mean, I always felt that because of the effort they'd put into it, we need to acknowledge that work and commend them and show them that, you know, we really value what they did by providing them updates. So it could be in writing, it could be a special presentation by Mr. Hansi, you know, and invite the group, those kinds of things.
So did you, did I hear your motion say that the stakeholders group end, but we will call them back for updates? Or, you know, end by the end of the 2010-11 years and, during that school year, provide updates as necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that they would cease to formally meet, but that they would, but on an as-needed basis, you know, we would, we would reach out to them and provide them with updates. Is that specific enough? No? Okay.
Mrs. Cordero.
All right. I will go ahead and second that.
Okay. Can one of you two report the exact intent of your motion? What's the motion and what the intent is?
Let me try one more time. Okay. I would like to approve the stakeholders work group transition to acknowledge that the stakeholders group has formally completed its original mandate, will discontinue meeting on a regular basis, but will continue to exist as a resource and be updated as needed.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one with Dr. Noel not present. Okay. Is that... Does that complete your report?
That completes. Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, the word to the stakeholders group is they did a heck of a job over the past year. And we will still use their input for the next year, so thank you very much. Okay. Let's see, it's 10:10. What do we have? And we still have Adelante.
Yeah, we still have a number of items that we need to complete and we really cannot move them off to the next meeting. They're both critical time-wise, so...
We have E3, can... Award of a Bid Number to Lease Purchase Mobile Kitchen to Carlin Manufacturing. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you Nancy for sitting through that. If you hadn't been here, we would have talked about it for an hour. Okay. E4, Approval of Board Action on Student Discipline Cases 09/10-10 and 09/10-47. Do you have a motion on 09/10-10?
Move to approve the request to return to the home school.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four zero. Dr. O'Neal, Dr. Noel not present. Oh, 09/10-47.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for one school year suspended expulsion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, four zero with Dr. Noel absent. Okay. Conference agenda. Report on Adelante Charter School Petition and Conditions for Approval, Including Memorandums of Understanding.
Well, let me just introduce the item. And we have a number of representatives here from the Adelante Petition Group, including new board members. So I would like them to take a moment to introduce themselves. As the board knows, in March, we received a petition from the Adelante Group. And on April 27th, the board granted conditional approval for the petition. There were some 52, 52 conditions, as I recall. And they've been working constantly on these. We've had a number of meetings. There are just a couple of elements that still need to be put in place. The MOU on facilities is one that we still need to finalize. Our plan on that would be to, since we've had a very recent back-and-forth on it, to meet this week, put that item on the agenda on Friday so that the board would see the facilities MOU for the final approval next Tuesday, June 29th. Oh, and special education. Okay. Holly, would you please? Yes. Please.
We have a lot of people out of town right now. Our principal is actually at the Charter School Boot Camp, it's called. And our attorney is there as well. We have a few of our new board members here, but just so you know, people were wanting to be here, but because of their schedules, they couldn't. This is Jack Rivas, right here, and he's part of our new board. And Monique Limone, right here. And then Beth Ford, you already know. And that's as far as our board.
That's it for the new board?
Uh huh.
Good. Board, we also have Melanie Peterson here, who's legal counsel for the district.
Thank you, Melanie. Dr. Sarvis, how would you like to approach this? You want to make the, you want to look, go through the, you want to go through them? You want to just tell us which ones you still have any questions with or where we stand right at the moment?
To my knowledge, I believe there are just three areas that we're still working with. I mean, we need to finalize the overall operational MOU. Facilities MOU is one standalone document. Some of the special ed components are still to be resolved. We'll be bringing those back to you. Condition number 12 is something that we just recently had discussion about. Condition number 12 dealt specifically with, well, let me just read it here. That the charter would be revised to include a comprehensive description of how the data on student achievement would be used to improve the educational program of the charter, Adelante Charter School, including more details about the annual programmatic audit, as well as provisions stating that the selection of the independent outside reviewer will be made by the district. And in the MOU, there are a number of elements that describe the programmatic audit. What I believe is still missing is a statement saying that that programmatic audit will go the next step to translate that analysis of student performance into changes or into whatever improvements. And I think that's rather simple to do if you agree to that. The other is just the language about the selection of the independent reviewer to be made by the district is a language element in the charter petition. And I believe the petitioners are willing to make that change as well.
That's on page 31.
31. And Board, it's really then open to your discussion and your consideration because you do need to specifically approve the MOUs. And, you know, many things have come back to you as exhibits and attachments in terms of schedules and handbooks, various things that do a lot to answer the question. Fill out the academic program, fill out the elements that many of you had questioned in the original presentation.
Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Herron. I just have a couple of quick things. One is just a little clarification on your math curriculum. And I don't know if either your, the board from Adelante can clarify that.
What page?
Well, it's in the textbooks and curriculum by grade level section in the back.
Is that in the handbook?
It's in one of the handouts. And then it's also in the action plan section where, refers to Harcourt. And then in the action plan, it's Envision. So I just wasn't sure if you're transitioning to Envision?
Right. That's the plan, is to transition to Envision.
I don't see a page number. But I just saw the references to both, and so I wasn't, I wasn't sure if this was like for 10-11, you plan on using Harcourt, and then 11-12, you're bringing in Envision?
Correct. For 10-11, our focus will really be on reading language arts. And then the following year, we would be focusing on mathematics.
Okay.
But we will be using the supplemental context for learning program next year. And then the following year, go for the Envision.
Okay.
We have so much professional development planned for the teachers that we felt like
Pace yourself.
it would be best to spread it out over three years and do it that way.
Other quick question is on, and Dr. Sarvis, you may want to weigh in on this too, and that is the open enrollment period. Especially given what's been going on at one of our other charter schools, I'm concerned about this one month. And I'm wondering, because we know that the shorter the enrollment period, the more disadvantages are already disadvantaged students in terms of figuring out that there's this choice and whether or not they should do that. I definitely think that open enrollment for our charter school should end before ours does so that they know if they need to go through the lottery process, if they want to make a different choice. So it makes some sense to me, but I'm wondering if it should be more like six weeks instead of a month? And I don't know what the month's all was.
Let's turn to that section.
That's on page 53 of 76.
Yes.
And I want to say how much I appreciate the schedule of the open enrollment being laid out there in the charter. That's fantastic.
Yes, we do as well. Well, we thought it beat four days all to heck.
And that I can absolutely see. I think that part is terrific. But I'm just still, I'm still just a little worried about the one month. Is that enough? Especially since they don't hold the drawing until it says the first or second Saturday. And so I guess I'm wondering if you could push it back another week or two.
Yeah, I wonder, petitioners, do you understand what the issue is? If students don't get into your program, then here they're relying on your lottery process. Once that is passed, if it's this late date, then they don't have the option of coming into our system with our other schools and participating in that transfer process.
I have a question on that. Don't they have the right to go to their true district school?
Oh, sure.
So that's different than Peabody? So that...
That part, that part is different. But I just want to be sure that if, that everybody has the same opportunities to choose, to make this choice. And Dr. Sarvis, I want to say I'm a little bit the reverse of what you were just saying in that I don't see this as a long process. I see this as one month as being short.
No, I'm sorry. I meant to be facetious.
Yeah.
Four days, which is a situation we have with another school that's a problem. Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a problem pushing this back two weeks and having six-week open enrollment and then having the lottery on the third or fourth. Or we can, I just wanted to have a little bit general, just in case.
You may want to just be the Saturday, yeah, the Saturday after your open enrollment period closes, whatever, if you would do that mid-February. I do think it's nice to give parents around two weeks because I think that we're going to be asked to move our open enrollment period so that it closes earlier to the beginning of March instead of the end. And with that, I think that it's important for parents to say, okay, I didn't get into Caesar Chavez. Is it okay for me to go to my home school or, or, sorry, Adelante? Do I, do I need to make that change or, you know? So I think it's good for parents to know before our process ends, but...
And you think yours is going to be around March 1st, first week of March?
Yes, that's, you'll be seeing that soon. And it is, and because of the program improvement status at some of our schools, if that's the attendance area, those parents have the right to request a transfer, you know, at least be in the lottery part and a placement somewhere.
So what are you suggesting?
I would suggest that instead of it being due by January 31st, that it be, and you could, anything later than that, up to two weeks later. So I would say by the, by the second Friday in February, something like that.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
And I think I had one other thing. What was it? Oh, I know what it was. It's this facilities use agreement, which I've only taken, I know it's a draft, it's not done. And I've only had a chance to take a really quick look at it. But in that really quick look, what I didn't see was the Proposition 39 distinction between providing classroom space for in-district students versus out-of-district students. Instead, all I saw was like a 250-student cap. And I really, I don't know, I mean, it should be addressed so that if 200 of those students are in district, we're providing funding and the rate should be different than if we're going to provide classroom space for those, you know, whatever percentage are not from within our district. And I don't know how that's being addressed.
I know we had a, Dave, we had a conversation about Prop 39 and the 80 threshold, but I don't know if we explicitly identified that.
Well, and it's not that part about the 80 threshold. It's about you, you're only ever required to provide classroom space for in-district students, even if you're at whatever number. And so I just feel like that needs clarification in the MOU so that we aren't paying for facilities for out-of-district students.
Okay. Mrs. Parker, if I may, the facility, the pro-rata share, the formula that we have, that we charge, we'll take that into account.
Great. And that's exactly what I want to see.
Anybody else with comments or suggestions?
This is just a structural suggestion, but getting back to the lottery on page 52 and where it says priorities in public random lottery, where it talks about priority enrollment, where you actually identify in rank order, the priority enrollment is over on page 53. And it just might be easier for someone to interpret reading this that we move that number one over where it falls under this priorities in public random lottery. Because as I first read this, I don't know if you, if you follow where I'm going on this, but when I first read this, where it says all names will be put into the lottery box on cards, that's the bottom paragraph on page 52. Then suddenly, I get over to 53 and it's talking about students currently attending the school. Well, they're not going to be in that lottery, correct? Okay, so I would, it's just a structural piece, but just to move it over there. So if anyone reading this is trying to figure out how it applies to them, that would work. The only other question I have right now has to do with the benchmark evaluation tool. And by the way, I really appreciated the action plan and the work that went into that because I thought that was thorough and very helpful. On the benchmark tool, could you talk just a little bit about how that was developed? And if there's going to be multiple, in other places in the chart, I read about other assessment tools. And I just am trying to figure out how many total assessment tools you'll be using.
Well, the benchmark assessment tool speaks to all of those. And we talk about different tools that will be used throughout the year. Action learning systems is one of them that correlates with the CST. And that's a benchmark exam that the kids will be taking. And then we also have a writing assessment. And they'll be doing a writing assessment in Spanish as well. And for physical fitness. And so there are these different benchmarks along the way. And the Adelante benchmark tool encompasses all of that. And so that's referred to quite a bit because they're all referenced there. But there are quite a few different benchmarks along the way. way.
Just ask staff then, is, is this benchmark overkill or assessment overkill, or is this in line with what we're, because I know we asked you to do that a lot, and then I saw all this, and I'm thinking, wow, that's, that's a lot of assessing, so, but is that pretty consistent with what we're doing in our other schools?
It's very consistent.
Okay.
If you look at our schedule, which doesn't actually have the at-risk emerging and on-track, they've mirrored pretty much our assessments, except it looks like more because they have the Spanish version.
The Spanish piece, yeah.
But two of our schools are using the, well, we have a lot of benchmarks, I'll just leave it at that, because we, for tone's sake.
All right.
That was actually one of my questions, so that one.
That was actually one of my questions, so that one is cleared up. I have a really minor thing, but it might make a difference to your board under, on page 34 of 76, where you're talking about the duties of officers. The yellow highlighted section says the president will serve as an ex officio member who only votes on matters in the event that there is a tie. Robert's Rules of Order actually allow the president to vote to create a tie as well as to break a tie. It actually allows the president to vote anytime the president's vote would alter the outcome, and creating a tie would keep, would keep a motion from passing. So I don't know if that's important to you or not, but you're, there actually is more to what Robert's Rules of Order says a president can do, but you, I don't know if you want to follow that or not, but I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, I like that. I would like to change that, so I'll talk to the board on Monday. Thanks.
My others were quiet, I don't know yet.
Okay. So, Dr. Sarves, are we ready to go forward on the 29th?
Well, our intention will be to bring this back in its entirety with the MOUs, and put it on the agenda next Tuesday, the 29th, for your final approval.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Holly, and everybody on your team that has worked so hard. We appreciate it very much. And the new board members, I can promise you, governing council, will do a much better job of ensuring that you succeed, along with your help, okay? Thank you.
And once again, I just want to comment on how much work this group does, and how many hours they put into this, and when you're done, you're going to have the best charter in town, I think, probably in the state, yes. And I just, I really appreciate it, because I've seen the dedication, so thank you very much.
Okay, we will go to F2, report from Godby Research and Community Support for Potential General Obligation Bond. I'd just like to set the groundwork, you know, at, at five minutes to 11:00. I know this is an important topic, but I will go to H and I in adjournment, so we have 27 minutes.
This is an item we've talked about a number of times. We contracted with Godby Research to do polling to determine whether there was support in the community for bond levies in both the elementary and the secondary districts, and this is time-sensitive, this is time-critical, because the board had anticipated the possibility of putting it on the November ballot, and the timeline set by the county says that you must decide by the end of June. So, we're going ahead with tonight's report. Later in our meeting, I will ask you about the possibility of a, of a hearing, perhaps even starting our meeting at 6:00, in order to make sure that we have plenty of opportunities for public input as well, although this is a primary source of public input that you're about to hear. Eric, do you want to say anything in advance?
Just one thing I probably should clarify is that when we first started investigating, you know, the feasibility of all of this, the statute reads under a Proposition, a Proposition 39 bond, that basically we have an 88-day notice requirement under statute, but the county elections division here is holding us to the traditional 123-day statute, which will require the board to take an action by the end of June. So, that's kind of my segue into Brian Godby's top-line results from the community opinion survey, so with that, here's Brian.
Thank you, Eric, Mr. President, members of the board, happy to be here presenting the results again to, for another potential ballot measure. This is the second level of analysis, we've already gone through a top-line report, this is a summary of that. Please feel free to ask questions as we go, as sometimes context is important, but given the hour and your agenda, I'll try to be brief. As you know, this was a telephone survey designed to look at two bond measures, to figure out what kinds of projects might be best supported or prioritized by the voters, to look at arguments both for and against the potential bond measures, and also consider alternative measures that would be partial taxes at both the elementary and the high school level. In terms of the methodology, again, it was a telephone survey, we surveyed likely November 2010 voters, we were in the field at the middle, in the middle of June, right after the election, the average interview length was 20 minutes. We surveyed 600 people overall in the high school district, so the sample there is very robust. We also had 400 within the elementary district, because the two boundaries are not the same, there's a bit of a disproportionate sampling strategy that we use routinely, and we used the last time we did work for you, so we employed that here as well. That gives you an error rate for the high school district of plus or minus 4%, and when we're looking at elementary district sample, about 5%. Any questions about methodology? No, okay. So what I've tried to do here is combine the first and second ballot tests, since we have two different measures for two different districts, to really cut to the chase, basically. Oops, I think I skipped one ahead. There we go, two ahead, even better, okay. So this shows you both the initial ballot test and the final ballot test. As you'll probably remember from the parcel tax survey we did, we started with an initial test which is completely cold. The only thing people know is the white, 75 words in the white box here on the right-hand side. Then we talk about what we're going to spend the money on, how much it actually costs, arguments for and against, and then we come back to the, the final test. To make it briefer, you can see here that for the bond measure, for, at the high school level, we got 65% yes at the first test, and 68% on the second test, including an increase in our definitely yes category of 8%, which is significant and important. Well, often people make the mistake of saying, well, you only have 34% or you only have 42% yes. In reality, the way we ask this question, we say, would you vote yes or no first, which is, of course, what's on the ballot, and then we push them into the definitely yes, definitely no, probably yes, probably no. So it's correct to look at them in the aggregate, as I did here, or to look at them in isolation to better understand the level of support. But the initial test is a great place to begin, a Prop 39 bond, which only requires 55% majority, and 68 on the second test is even better. The elementary school is similar, but slightly higher, not statistically speaking, but higher nonetheless, 67% on our initial test and 70% on our second test. That also mirrors what we saw in the parcel tax as well. While the parcel tax numbers two years ago were higher, and substantially higher, and that's important, and I'll come back to that later, the elementary school got more support than the high school did, so we're seeing the same thing here for a bond measure. These next few slides are really more complicated to look at, because I'm trying to take a variety of features that we really looked at in two different sets, and compare them with the elementary and the high school, and you'll see that they mostly track pretty, pretty much the same, where we had the elementary and high school test on that particular project. In the burgundy color, if you will, those are the elementary school rankings, the golden color is the high school. The way we ask this question is we posed each of these items and said, would you be more or less likely to support the measure if you knew it would upgrade classrooms and restroom for disabled access? Once we get the answer more likely, less likely, we then ask them, is that much more likely or somewhat more likely, and same thing on the negative side. When we're done with the survey, we then go back and assign numeric values, so it's easier to look at the data and compare the various projects and, and determine voter priorities. The scale, if everybody were to have said much more likely, would be a 2.0 on the bars. If everybody conversely were to have said much less likely, you'd see minus twos. For Prop 39 bond measures, anything that is really 0.8 or 0.9 or above is quite a good feature, and you can see this prioritizes them in descending order. So at the top, we have upgrade classrooms and restrooms for disabled access, repair placed leaking roofs, provide adequate libraries at elementary schools, you can see there's only one bar there, since that wasn't asked in the high school, replace electrical plumbing, heating, ventilation, and upgrade science, classroom labs. All of those 1.1s, to put them into perspective in terms of the percentages that people responded, are roughly between 47% much more likely, and 25% somewhat more likely, up to 47 or 48% much more likely, and 27% somewhat more likely. So you're in the low 70s in total more likely, so you can see that's a very good score, given that we only need a 55% majority to win.
Could I, could I just ask a quick question on that one? Would it be safe to assume there's not a huge degree of variation between 1.1 and 1.0 in terms of priorities?
Yeah, we usually like to see about a 0.2 difference on this particular scale for it to be significant. So, yeah, you're right, that, while this is the priority, and when you're putting together a Prop 39 bond plan, which has to be part of the full text and part of the resolution that you'll have to get done by the end of the month, you've got to put one thing before the other, and our recommendation for all of our clients has always been, this is the order you put them in. It doesn't mean that you're, you have to do them in that order, it just means that that's what the voters are looking for in terms of their priorities. When we drill down beyond the overall resolution and the overall project plan, you do have to make priorities and sacrifices to get into the 75-word ballot question, similar to what we did when we did the parcel tax, and we like to use this to drive that as well. And that is, of course, a summary, it is not the entire plan, because it can't fit into 75 words, so we can be judicious in using the voters' priorities. This next chart is more of the features, and you can see we asked a lot of features, because there are a lot of different projects that you have both at the elementary and high school level. This is 0.9 to 0.7. To give you, again, a context, those 0.9s at the top, improved security and safety systems, are roughly 42 much more likely, and 25% somewhat more likely, for a total of 67% more likely, so again, well above the Prop 39 supermajority needed at 55%. If you go down to the bottom, install solar energy systems, that is the 0.8 for the elementary side, is 44% much more likely, 19% somewhat more likely, for a total of 63. So with a 5% margin of error, at that point, we're starting to get close to the 55%, because that'll be about 58% or so with the error rate, so there's not a lot of cushion there, so you can see that the things above that gain you more support from the voters.
I'm sorry, you would draw the line at what point then?
It's right about, right below the solar energy.
Okay, okay.
Because it's...
Not above that, below it.
Yeah, it's right, right, right below it. Now, again, that doesn't mean you don't, we've got virtually all the features on the list then, that doesn't mean you don't include the, the high school theater. It just means it's not going to be in the shortlist, for sure, on the ballot summary, the 75 words. It might be in your detailed program, but it's never going to be something you're going to go out and you're going to be talking about, because it's just not that big a voter priority, it's right around the 55% level.
Thank you.
This next set of questions is much the same format, we ask each of these individual items separately, and ask people if they would be much more likely to support the measure, or somewhat more likely, but because these are positive arguments, and we've identified them as positive arguments, we've truncated the scale, so there isn't a less likely side, because it wouldn't make any sense, here's a positive argument, would you be less likely to vote for the, the measure? Voters say, what? On the phone, so, so the scale changes a little bit, and it shifts higher, but as you'll see, as I give you examples, these are still all very good, we've got nine out of nine arguments that we asked, that were all 1.2 or above, and that equates to 70% at least somewhat more likely. So all of these items are good reasons to vote for the measure, they might be things that wind up in the ballot argument for the measure, or in subsequent information efforts, but done by an independent campaign committee, much as you did for the parcel tax two years ago. At the top of that list, that the bond actually saves millions of dollars, or million dollars in maintenance and energy costs, and that that money could be used for the general fund, for other programs. All funds benefit local schools, this has been an overwhelming positive argument of late. The state is, in fact, the bad guy, as I'm sure your budget knows, but it tests very well to say that the money is staying local. Citizens oversight, like what we talked about in the parcel tax, well, in that case, it was not required by law, in this case, for a Prop 39 bond, it is required, and it is one of the top arguments. No money used for administrator salaries, it's a similar accountability measure, and at the top of the list, and then we have rounding out the top part, science and technology equipment for the high school. The item at the very bottom is create math and science tech and green tech academies was 51% much more likely, 20% somewhat more likely, for a total of 70% more likely, so again, all of these are great, great arguments for the measures.
I just want to...
Certainly.
Just to make sure, I don't know how many charts you have.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Yeah. Negative arguments, same sort of idea, and I'll summarize these, we ask these for two reasons, one, because the appeals court required, that ruling that said you can do this kind of study says you have to test both sides of the equation, and that's why we do it, also because we don't want to have rose-colored glasses and just say the glass is wonderfully full. What we see here is some of the typical arguments, like this is not the right time to raise taxes during an economic crisis, taxes are already too high, and the district could have managed money better. None of those is higher than 37% more likely to oppose the measure, so even though it's a positive, it still has an impact on the negative side. There was another question in here, both for the elementary and the high school district, and we asked people if you knew that this would be a, not a tax increase, but a tax extension of the current bond rates, would you be likely to vote yes or no on the measure? And you can see here, from the, remember back to those first charts I showed you, we have 71% now for the elementary, if it's just an extension, and that's a 4% increase over our first test, and 69% for the high school, and that too is a 4% increase over our first test. So substantial jumps when people understand that these are just extensions of the current As I said at the outset, after we dealt with all of the facilities issues, we also turned to an alternate, which would be a parcel tax proposal at both the elementary and the high school level, and we asked the same sort of yes-no question. Here you've got 69% for the elementary school parcel tax at $41, and 67% for a high school parcel tax at $35, plus or minus 5%, unlike the bond measures where we have a very strong cushion on top of the error rate. With the error rate here for the elementary school, we're at 64%, so that's a loss. For the high school district, we're similarly at 64%, so that's potentially a loss as well. So, and that's substantially less than it was two years ago, where we were in the 70s when we were talking about parcel taxes. So, one summary page, and I'll leave the rest for you to read at your leisure, but clearly we have a 65% support at the first test for the high school bond measure, 68 second test, we've got 69 when we tell them it's not a tax increase. With an error rate, there's still a substantial cushion between the low of 64% second test and the 55% that we would need to, to be... second test and the fifty-five percent that we would need to be successful. Same is true for the elementary measure. Sixty-seven first test, seventy second test, could be as low as sixty-five percent. There's a ten-point cushion after the error rate, so that's a really good place to be. And as I said earlier, the seven out of ten voters support the measures when they hear that they're simple extensions, and that will be the most important item to communicate if these do go forward. In terms of the parcel taxes, as I just indicated, they don't enjoy that same cushion. There, in fact, is no cushion. When you add the margin of error, they could easily lose, and that's a substantial difference from where we were before. So with that, I will entertain any other questions you might have.
Mr. Deacon?
Boy, where to start here? We have to have the language by the end of June?
No, we have to have the decision. We would then hammer out the language by our, what, July thirteenth meeting? Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah. I think we have to have the seventy-five words on the twenty-ninth.
The seventy-five, oh.
And the resolution that goes in.
But it'll be structured, you know, you have to structure the seventy-five words to be flexible enough to encompass what you want to have on the list. Obviously, it's not going to be so project-specific because it's only seventy-five words.
That's right.
So the call, the resolution calling for the election and the actual ballot language. And that's being, we're, you know, we had to anticipate that the board might tell us to do that, so, you know, we have bond council working on that.
Okay. How do you define tech, or how do you think the voters define tech? Because I'm thinking career technical, but I'm not sure.
I don't think they think of career technology. I think they're thinking of high technology. So biotech, nanotech, computers, I think that's what.
Did we ask anything about career tech vocational, construction academy-type things?
Let me get back to my full questionnaire and just scan through there. There was quite a list. We had one that was renovate new classrooms and labs, renovate new classroom labs can be used to create math, science, technology, green technology academies at Santa Barbara High School, so it's not quite career technology, although the green tech is, could be part of that vocational kind of project. We have another one, classroom computers and technology funded by the measure will better pay, better prepare our students to go to college in high-paying Twenty-First Century jobs. And then that's probably as close as we got to it.
Just in previous experience with other surveys, have you ever surveyed for that career tech piece?
Not that frequently. What facility measures really, what drives, really drives them are a couple of things, and you saw them earlier. Their leaky roofs, HVAC repair, and science labs. And those are the big things. They're simple things that the voters can wrap their heads around, and very often, the science labs are at the top of that list.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
I just, I want to say how much I appreciated that the people that were called cared so much about basic maintenance issues and didn't go for the really flashy stuff, because that's what we see.
I think what, we've been seeing that in other districts in the last two years, and it's fortunate that that's your need. Voters aren't really supporting big new buildings, because right now, they're only fixing their roofs. They're not adding on, you know, a new gymnasium in their house, so they're not sure that they want to fund those in most districts that we've been working in. So the maintenance and the repair is where people want to stay right now.
Well, that's really great to see as a board member. I feel like, well, I want to address the parcel tax issue, too, and that is, school districts have tremendous needs, and on the facility side, when I go to schools and I see some of the deteriorating conditions, to the extent that we have hazardous situations in some places, and just incredible inequities in terms of what resources are, you know, facilities, resources are available at different district schools, I feel like it's our responsibility to ask our community what they want to do about it, and if this is something that they care about, and certainly your poll seems to indicate that this is something that they would care very strongly about. It's frustrating to me to see, because we also obviously have programmatic needs, which can't be paid for through the facilities bond, that can be passed with a fifty-five percent majority. And here we have, we have these wonderful members of our community who have really asked us to say, "Well, what about programs? What about going out for another parcel tax? You just passed one two years ago, go out again." And to see that really, there's a tremendous majority of our local community that cares about that, too, but because of that two-thirds passage requirement, it's just so frustrating that we can't, that that would be very hard work for us to try to pass in this particular climate. And so, you know, in this particular case, I don't, especially because we're being pushed to, to get this to the county so quickly, and I would like to ask why they have, if the law is one way, why they're pushing us a different way with a shorter deadline?
From what I got via our bond council, as in conversations with the county elections, they're saying that they cannot meet that timeframe internally. So the issue, and I was just talking to Brian about it, is there's not a whole lot you can do, because you can't take them on, because they've got the timeline on their side. If you want to take them on after the election about it, that's one thing, but at this point, they hold all the cards.
We ran into the same issue on the parcel tax, and as you'll recall, we did have to have the specific seventy-five-word segment. We had a longer period of time to hammer out the lengthier description, but the county elections had to take it to the county board of supervisors for a consolidation, well, approval for consolidation of the ballot, and that all took time on their part, and then with their printing and their ramp-up.
Okay.
And I also think, in talking to, I think Brian will comment on this, they're not the only county that's ignoring the statute.
Yeah, there are a couple of other counties.
Okay, let's just assume we have to do it by the thirtieth.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Mrs. Guerrero?
Well, my question was going to be, I think I know the answer, but would, would you normally recommend, based on the data that you have, that it, that a district go out for the, for a bond with this data?
Yeah, I think this data very clearly shows that the bond is going to be a much easier road, and that the parcel tax, you may not get there. It will be a steep climb.
But I didn't, I realize I may have stated it wrong. I didn't mean to say rather than the parcel tax. I mean, even if the parcel tax, we're not choosing between the two, let's say that's just out, but would you, but on this data, would you recommend going out for the bond?
Oh, most definitely. Yeah, absolutely. I think these are excellent numbers to proceed with the bond measure.
Just one question. I made it very clear when we talked about this before, that my concern was, if we go for a bond measure now, in two years, we want to get the parcel tax renewed, what effect will this vote have on renewing a parcel tax? You made it real clear to me that you don't, that you can't determine that now, but can you, for the record, give me your answer again as to why I shouldn't worry about this issue torpedoing a parcel tax in two years?
I think there's three parts to that answer. One is, it's difficult for voters to project where they may be fiscally in two years. They can think about right now, which is the way we ask this question, and we don't really get into the nuts and bolts of how many months in the future it is. Secondly, I did actually look at the cross tabs between the bond measures and the parcel tax to see if there was some large segment that were defecting from the parcel taxes, because those were asked after the bond measures, and statistically, it just wasn't there. They're a little lower, but not a whole lot, and so I don't think that there's an impact of one on the other in this survey. So I think that that's a good indication for the future, when the economy might be better. And finally, I think that renewals of parcel taxes are always easier than the initial tax. Even if you choose to increase it, and if you increase it an incremental amount, not as much as the initial tax, that's always going to be less, and what we've seen over the years, over and over again, is that if there's X dollars for a parcel tax in one year, and then the next year, there's still X additional dollars. So you can almost double a parcel tax in the renewal and still not exceed the original threshold that you had. So if you have X dollars that you're renewing and X minus one, you're below the threshold, and you stand a pretty good chance of being successful.
Any other questions? Mr. Deacon?
I'll make this really quick, but I just want to say, I understand there, there are people out there, and I think, I include myself, who would love to do something for programming, but I don't think the time is right, and I think the time is right for a bond. And I do like the fact that we can buy things like lab equipment that really facilitate programming concerns. I mean, and, you know, I mean, we've said before, well, with a great teacher and a shack, you could do wonderful things, but with a great teacher and a beautiful lab, or at least, you know, a lab that's not dilapidated, you can probably do even better things. So I think that this, this does address that programming issue, at least in that sense, and so that's why I'm excited that you got such great results on this. Thank you.
I think the one other thing that I was happy to see, we've talked about potentially crafting the language to make the deferred maintenance match, and there's so many of those items that are deferred maintenance in nature, so you, you have the ability to leverage state funds by making a deferred maintenance match and still accomplishing a lion's share of these projects, because they're deferred maintenance in nature. So I thought that was a nice fit.
Well, and Mr. Haink pointed out, when I was at Washington School, that, that we could use bond money to pay off, correct the loan for the Washington Portables, which would put that money back into the general fund and essentially pay for teachers.
Yeah, I've talked to bond council about looking at the language so we could potentially retire the debt on those portables. Those were my two big priorities.
A public comment?
Okay. Lane Wheeler?
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Almost on a weekly basis, I have somebody contact me about something that's deficient at their school site, and we believe that this would be an important activity for the board to enjoin, that both the community and our educators in, and we certainly appreciate the work that Godby has done. I've worked with them before when we did the parcel tax, and I think their work is real sound and solid, and we would certainly, without consulting the rest of the executive board, I can't say we'd be able to support this, but I would certainly think we'd look favorably on this kind of thing. And I wanted to speak, I know it's late tonight, but I won't be here next week, somebody else will be, and I wanted to make sure we communicated that before you made your decision. But SBTA certainly has stood behind these kinds of events in the past, and we would certainly be there again, I do believe. Thank you much.
Thank you. Anything else from the board at this point? So six o'clock for a public hearing?
Six o'clock on the twenty-ninth? Good.
Okay. Thank you very much for spending the time with us, we appreciate it. Coming events, number H. Anything? Future agenda items, number I. We will adjourn.